I wonder if we have an extra flag that we could just have down in the conference room for those time people want to have a meeting so tight as not having to be the flag.
He's such a good flag though.
It is, it is. He makes a good flag, I'm not taking that away from him.
Turn that on.
What happens if he's not here?
Does he have a flag tattoo somewhere like?
Is that the one?
Well, I have one at home that I can bring that I used to use for road reading. So if we get down too bad.
Green light.
Green light, green's good.
Green is good. That what you're hoping?
Hopefully.
Hitty up. Bugity, bugity, bugity.
All right. If we had a chance to review the agenda, do we have any conflicts or do we have any changes to the agenda that we know of? Otherwise, we will stand after. Adam auditor, will you read the minutes please?
I would love to.
Thank you.
January 23rd, 2024, the Board of Supervisors met at 9:00 AM with Gene Hayden, Chair Presiding, Members Present Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossford. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. Ben Chavin, Assistant County Attorney, oh, Engineer, sorry, Ferdi and Slut. Sorry, Engineer.
It says work in that way?
No, it says Engineer, but my mouth said Attorney.
Not even enabled.
A lot cheaper to have them in the engineers office.
Yes. Sorry about that.
You're fine.
Spoke with the Board about the award of, about the award of Project BRS County 24, 131, 6024, Concrete Box Culvert on County Road E16 to Dixon Construction in the amount of $874,128.6. The contract wasn't available during this time, no action was taken. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to approve the following resolution. Resolution 2024-7 detour for closing a numbered route. Voting I, Schultz, Dozart, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossford. Motion passed unanimously. Riley Gibson, Turnkey Logistics from Summit Carbon Solutions, gave the Board an update on the pipelines. Paul Plum, Executive Director of Chamber and Development Council of Crawford County, and Stephanie Weiss, CDC Board President, met with the Board to request funds for Chamber and Development. No action taken at this time. Joel Langle and Keith Duncan from Holmes Murphy Insurance spoke with the Board via Zoom about some services that will benefit the county and employees. A discussion was made by the Board to set time and date for a public hearing on land rent auction for the Crawford County farm. No action was taken at this time. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned 11:29. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday 4:00 PM proceeding the next morning.
All right. Did I see anything not right there? Otherwise, sign this. Thank you, Terry. You did a good job.
I really did.
All right. Does anybody mind if I go first today? Because we just have a few. I promise.
Is that an objection, Ty? I would give a second here again.
I actually.
He's feeling left out.
Well.
There's three.
Start your timer, buddy.
Hey, if you say just one more thing, we're gonna hold you two.
Right in front of you.
You guys have no idea I can really how fast I can really talk. So if you want me to talk fast, I will, because I can talk fast. So here's what the update is that I think is going to interest you guys. I'll be the judge of that. So we, the Commission for the Veterans have gone through the basement of the building over there, and they think it's a great idea to have Wheezy move over there. The advantages of this, as we kind of talk it through, is it makes more sense for DHS people and the mental health advisory person to be actually in the courthouse. Because when they're here, they're either going to the jail or up to the courthouse. So we can turn that space that Louise has for DHS and mental health and still get that rent that we were gonna get from, from this space. Does that make sense?
How many?
Where? What do you, you mean that back room, that back office?
Where Louise's office is.
Oh, where Louise's office is?
Right, right.
So it's gonna remain empty 95% of the time?
I was thinking more we move Jake over there.
Okay, okay.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I wanted to talk about. That's kind of what I thought, too, but I, Louise kind of, you know, that's where Caitlin kind of comes now.
HHS, huh?
Yeah.
How often does Caitlin come?
Only as needed. Most of her stuff is via Zoom.
I feel like we'd be tying up an office for very little use.
So could she just use that back office at Louise's office?
She could.
Well, why, why couldn't she? Maybe it's not so big enough, but if you move Jake to Louise's office, you have her Jake's office.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm gonna give you the advantage of that, because then they could use that conference room as needed, and their offices would actually, they, and they can share. They both know because of COVID, they don't have the paper.
You were saying they.
HHS.
So HHS sometimes meets after hours. So we're gonna give them a key to our building to be able to be in here.
They're betting right now that, so.
That's where I'm.
I'm just saying, I'm, that's just one probably down call.
Open Human Services?
Yeah, I think it's HHS.
I wanted to be able to bring it up so that we are all on the same page of the pros and cons of this plan.
We're limited with space in the courthouse anyways. I just feel like the new building for public health is small to go to.
Both of them? Well, there's still, there's still gonna be room, because that whole area, you know, that big space is not taken for anything.
That's where I think it's still the most appropriate place to put them is still over there.
Got it.
Because we're so limited in space in here.
Duly noted.
That's one of the things we've been talking about is ways to commandeer more space in this structure.
Duly noted.
It would be different if we were finishing a new Second A Roads office building and all was on the move out, and they were, but that's not even in the cards right now.
All right. So this, this, do you guys kind of follow that, that this is, you know, when you walk in, this will be open, there'll be a closet. This is where she'll come in. This will be for her Zoom room, and then this back, this is Jake's.
You're talking Louise?
Louise.
Yeah, in the basement of the city center.
So this is the restroom over here?
The restroom's gonna be right over here, out here.
Where's that?
That's the lobby out there.
This is the lobby. This is just.
That's the lobby, I see. So you're, you're going in.
In from the lobby, yeah.
Got you. Where there used to be the sit down.
There's a window there currently, she's gonna utilize that for tap.
These two offices, used to be those little offices, and since that, we have that piping going up through here, and she needs a place for when they do Zoom meetings with, like, the veterans come in and they talk to people. This is where the families will meet. This is actually, this is Louise's.
Do you know, I should have asked her why she was here this morning?
I should have had her stay.
Is she still thinking about where the vending machines were, putting a wall of honor out?
I think so.
And then if she moves over there, what about Wheezy Vision?
Well, there's.
That's still gonna be here.
I think so.
Well, there's two differences.
There won't be anybody to display a core. I mean, a lot less people.
I asked her about that, she said it was still gonna be here.
It was gonna be here.
Yeah, clearly asked her, so we don't.
But would we move that to the Wall of Honor up front? Because her office won't be.
Yeah, I don't know, we could probably.
We could put that out there, and then she could still have Wheezy Vision over at her place. But they visualize that as a veterans complex.
Ties in.
This nice big sign, one stop. What they really like about it is, you know, no matter where they park, if they have a veteran that's handicapped, it's a long jaunt into the courthouse there. They could have their van right there, pull up where that big ADA door is. The windows are here, they just, maybe today they'll get started, that kind of. And they're gonna get started, they're ready to go.
Interview room.
We've had one small change order, Karen and I talked about it, we talked about it with the public health. When the actual guy came to do it, where the door is going in, it needs to be kind of supported a little bit more when they hear out, smaller door, they're gonna have to reinforce it. And that was $2,500 more. It's just a change order that they couldn't predict.
So they're replacing the windows around the door?
There's gonna be a metal door for the one, for the balderers, that's gonna be the ADA door. And it was supposed to kind of mimic what it looks like upstairs when you come in, so there'll be windows around that. Where the bathroom is, that's gonna be a, a window that you can't see through.
So that's a push button ADA door like we got here at the courthouse?
Right, yes, yes. And that was very specific there. So moving along, but I, but the decision has, you know, it was kind of up in the air whether they really wanted to move, whether it was the best thing, and the Commission really liked it. Louise is getting excited about it. She is going to take her, what was that, a Bostie table?
Yeah. She's thinking about it. She might order one, because just for the limited space, it might be better if it were a little bit narrower table, so.
What kind of timeframe?
The reason that I needed this.
She retires in six years, obviously.
She'll never see it.
I'm just playing.
It's 2,216 square feet for the flooring down there.
That's awesome.
That already had somebody come and kind of major that out.
Wow, that's huge.
And I kind of looked at the different kinds of flooring that would be available, have a little bit of a price on that, but we'll have to do an RFP on that.
Ask for her.
Would be nice, but not what I'm looking at.
Paint some lines, let's go.
Before I can have the drywallers come in, we needed to know the configuration of this. So what she liked about it is, you know, the windows are still gonna be over here, so she's still gonna get that light in here.
Yeah.
She's requesting that we put some insulation in this wall to kind of buffer the noise from.
You can see right through the paneling.
Probably the wit, when, uh, Wit Wick is in there doing their business, that she won't hear the children.
It's just common, so. Right. Insulation, every, any office should have all the walls should be insulated to keep the privacy private.
You know, when I, just as a point, when I redid, when I built my new shop, so the truck noise wouldn't be so bad, we actually used that Cellulose insulation, you know, but kind of extra thick wall. And Cory blew that in, you know, and man, did that make, boy, that, I mean, I could hear it faintly, but the trucks running out of her shop, but it ain't like it's just across the wall. I mean, that, that stuff works.
That's some good stuff.
Yeah, anybody.
Not that, not that.
Right hand man. There'll be a wall of storage there, too, so that'll help buffer the noise, too.
That's a little space, you know, kind of when you went out and there's that space in between that goes into that long hallway. She also would like to have some shelves in there to put her different things that she puts up for different holidays. She has clothes, they're very uniform, and they have a special, and so.
Yeah, there's some good storage space in there.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's a very, very good use of that space. Freeze up some space in here, and it makes it a one stop for the veterans if they have any public health needs and so forth.
Oh, good.
All right, so I just want to give you an update on that. And then because Kylie was here last week, it kind of started the conversation again about an ordinance for the pipeline. So I basically visited with some of the folks that have gone to every one of the eminent domain meetings and know, I said, please give us some bullet points of what you want to see in that. And so I did get some information. Is it okay if we put it on the agenda for next week to kind of discuss what we want to do? There's some new legislation that's come out talking about the eminent domain and all that kind of stuff. So I thought we would just maybe put it on the agenda to see where we're at with it, because people are afraid that we're not doing anything and that we really need to have something in place.
Do you have Colin here?
That's where I would get Colin involved if we wanted to have that all.
I mean, until we really know what legislation comes out of some of these files.
I mean, I guess my understanding is that, as counties, what can you do from an eminent domain standpoint when the IUB is gonna decide that decision?
What, what, what some of the counties are doing is they have it out there and it's pending, you know, the final ruling from the Shelby Storey County, because that's actually an appeal. And so we won't enforce it until we find out that at least it's on our books, because if it's not on the books, it's my understanding, when the eminent domain ruling comes down, we have nothing in there, we're, we just can't do anything, we can't come after.
I mean, are they thinking, the eminent domain ruling is either gonna be yay or nay. So are they thinking there's gonna be some other decision, other than yay or nay?
No.
I mean, if they approve eminent domain, anything we have on the books is irrelevant. If we say you can't do eminent domain and IUB says you can, you can't.
The ordinance would be more about our setbacks, and, you know, here.
But our setbacks are no void.
But we won't enforce them until we get, they get that ruling. I've got some examples of things that I want to.
We can talk about this, that's fine.
All right, all right. I'll have, I'll have Colin here, and I'll kind of have these, I just wanted to make.
So what do you want on the agenda?
Discussion about a possible ordinance for pipelines in Crawford County.
Do you have an idea of what those ordinance should be, or an idea of what is? I mean, if everything's in appeal, counties that put in ordinances are up in the air, and we're still up in the air with the IUB, what do we got to gain?
I'll, I'll print these out.
I just hear you. I mean, because I know Mr. Baumann stated such that we need to, but, and I, maybe you can fill in a blank here, because originally I thought that valve was gonna be on his property, so now it's on your dad's property. And to me, it seemed like now he's trying to dictate how close to your dad's place that valve could be, right? That's how I took it, and I just kind of understanding, so.
Can't dictate someone else's ownership, right?
I mean, he gained whatever he wanted, he wanted it off his properties, and now he's trying to say, well, it's too close to Roger's house.
People that have already signed, I believe, have a, you know, we're not telling people that have signed that it can't. So there's gonna be, it's quite detailed, it's like eight pages long. So I'll print it out for everybody to take.
I mean, because I guess my question will be to Colin, is that FMSA and everything regulates pipelines. When we get to a valve station, that's above ground, is that not a pipeline?
That's still part of the pipeline.
But, right, but FMSA specifically says pipeline. So when it's a valve station, is that something that we can have control over? That we can, you know, set a fee? If you're gonna put up a valve station in Crawford County, it's gonna cost you $1 million per valve station? Can you do that? And is this something we're gonna make? Or is it, is it an extension of the pipeline?
That's an excellent question.
And right, I mean, that's the question I would ask Colin, is to find that out. Do we have regulation over something that is not a pipeline? That is part of.
Interesting.
Those are the questions that we need to know now.
Right, I agree, I agree.
And the other thing that, that folks are concerned about is how strictly we're going to monitor going under our roads. You know, I, they asked, is Paul, does Paul make the final decision on that? And I know Paul's working on it, and Paul knows.
Well, he brings those.
To us.
To us.
Paul would bring it.
What recommends yes or no, and we sign off?
Yeah, we will have to make sure that Paul understand, you know, and so they just want us to kind of firm things up again, because we've been sitting here idling, and eventually these rules are gonna be in place, and if we don't have anything, we can't run in afterward. And we would have a resolution that says they're not enforceable until these decisions have been made. Just a thought.
Yeah, but I mean, we gotta, I need to know what, thank you for rules. I mean, because if it's got something to do with where the pipe by place. I mean, IUB's already told us that they have the final say on where it's gonna be. So we can have all the setbacks we want. I mean, that was my frustration earlier, there was no, seemed to be no room to negotiate, because IUB wouldn't even let Summit negotiate where the line ran. You know, like if they wanted to go around Timms Farm or something of that nature. They had to stay with their original plan, which in the original plan, they wouldn't have had no idea who they were gonna get to sign it, and they wouldn't.
I'll print Dickinson and Palo Alto's, they are both, they feel that those are really good. And we did.
Those are good.
The folks that have gone to all of the meetings, they've really made this research.
But Dickinson and Palo Alto, they would have been sued also by Southern.
Not yet.
Not yet. So, okay, so we don't know proceeding forward, if their ordinance, what it would have been ruled by a judge with what the ordinance that they have, we don't have a ruling here.
Right.
So we don't know if it is like good ordinance or not.
And they have a resolution that says it's not enforceable until there's, you know, at least it's on the books, but it's not enforceable, similar to what Shelby County, basically what the judge said is, you got all this stuff out there, but it's not enforceable. And so now it's in appeals to see, you know, what part of it is, so they're just kind of idling, but it's, it's hanging out there, so you can't sue if we're not planning on enforcing.
What is it costing, though, to get part of that appeal process? Do you know what it's costing Shelby County?
What's costing everybody? Because they're in our pool for ISA.
But what is their actual physical cost?
Well, I thought one county was up to $150,000 if they passed.
I have not got the numbers on that, but those are all things, let's get that conversation going again.
Passed, uh, they want to say the Board of Supervisors passed a motion to increase the amount they were spending up to $150,000.
Not only are they spending their own county taxpayer dollars. Until we really have an IUB ruling and knowing, or a state legislation bill comes out. Their pool is gonna cost everybody else money, it's gonna, I mean, these are all things the way.
And 100% of the IUB ruling, whatever it is, will be appealed. Yeah. It will be, whatever, whatever the ruling is, it will be appealed.
I just got, I won't be here, so we're gonna, I know some of the, the talk, yeah, last week was, and that's, I understand that it's restricting or protecting these valve stations where they can buy the ground. Are we going to grandfather any existing valve station in, or are we gonna make them people come up and?
Like the ones for the natural gas and stuff?
Exactly, picture one here on 170th Street, valves taken out, it's right outside the right of it, and there is no guards around it. And that's a natural gas pipeline.
Yeah.
I mean, you go out here to the cemeteries, there's a natural gas valve station coming out of the ground, and I don't think there's much for barriers or anything around that, so.
Good point.
Just, just be careful on one.
And that might be their point. That might be their point, you know, if we don't have something like that, would have to be grandfather. But if we have something and they do get their thirded bill, just please put a, something around it, so if somebody's out driving and, whoa, don't run into the damn thing.
But I.
So it makes sense.
If we have this for discussion and.
Some degree.
You know, at least we get that out there, so all those questions can be answered, and we're not behind the eight ball that we were sitting. So we'll just put it on the agenda.
And Kyle's gone.
Yep.
Well, Kyle?
So that's why I asked that question today, so you guys can bring that, I'm concerned, but. I did find a funny yellow gas fall in the truck that was hauling carbon dioxide. And there was no police escorts, nothing.
I mean, we have a CO2 tank that is how far off on Highway 30 at Continental Carbonics. That's, yeah. We have two huge tanks there, there's nothing around them.
Someone could get tangled up in there.
Semi could go off the road, bot cat could back up.
Yeah, yeah, actually, somebody moving snow up there could run.
Could run into it with its bucket, put a hole in it. Nobody's ever complained or said anything about those two big CO2 tanks.
I think if we do anything, maybe a, a, just an additional step to make sure we're putting it out there that our voice is heard about imminent ban concerns and public safety concerns, is that we draft a letter and send it to our local legislators and the governor, and they'll sign it.
All of the above.
Those are the people that should have been working those angles already.
Right.
Pressuring IUB and the.
And I know there was already a process through that.
I've got anything.
Well, the House did their 9010 rule, but the Senate didn't even bring it out of committee.
Right.
Subcommittee.
Yep.
I can't print from here, there was a print assault, but.
We sat here and watched one of our own senators there, said we need to do something. When this is on sun, then that, that done enough.
Right. The true authority to do anything really lied within the state, and they brushed it off their shoulders. And it fell in our lap, which we don't have the authority to do much.
All the money.
Kyle?
Yeah.
Forward all this stuff to you.
Yeah.
So that you can see it and kind of think of some questions you might have, and.
Yeah. So if you got something forwarded to us, yeah, that way we know, get our brains thinking.
They probably barely print it all out, then at least you don't have so much paperwork and you can review the issue. So I just wanted to get that in, because we always run out of time, so my time is up.
I feel their point, that, they probably feel like we're not doing anything, but I just really don't know.
And that's what I said.
What we, what we can do. What, what gets dropped by the state and IUB or the federal?
I don't know, I think we've been doing more than they realized.
Well, and I think that just, you know, when they came and talked again, you know, it brings that all to the forefront. And so my challenge was, you, you guys have absolutely followed this, you know exactly. Give us some bullet points, give us some guidance on what you would like to see in it, and then I'll take that forward, so that's, this is where we're at. I didn't want to just.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I'll just stop you.
Okay.
Whatever we do will be eight steps too short. Period.
We're working on it.
We had the same damn thing with the windmills.
Well, I'll forward this to you, we don't want to worry about print it, and we'll just go from there, it'll be on the agenda. Kyle, you can give us the questions you have.
I'll look it over.
Okay, very good. You wanna go? Because I went first last time.
Sure.
I'm gonna start my timer.
Oh, now you're starting it.
You did not even say just one more thing.
That must sound dirty.
I had a New Year's resolution, and it's to do better.
Okay. I had, I had the, the NACOS Rack, you know, their Rural Action Caucus had their meeting last week, and it was kind of short and mostly about discussing what we're gonna be doing for rural community, rural, rural communities. And actually, we're, they made kind of a big deal, we're having a couple of good events where we're getting together with the urban counties, and then the rural counties, and then even with the ISAC Board getting together. So that sounds, uh, not ISAC, but NACO Board, sorry. Anyway, they, they had a guy present, presenting, and, and it's on Zoom. And I, I don't always follow everything the best, and it's hard to ask questions in Zoom, you know? But anyway, get my glasses out here. I feel like I'm old, am I gonna already? I guess I am.
I know.
Anyway, this, Mr. Ahmed, he spoke about the new, it's, it's kind of a new website, or at least a redesigned, as I understood it, for rural.gov. And what they do is they, it's a one stop shop for all rural development resources. And I, anyway, he highlighted several of the opportunities that are open. The USDA just announced $2 billion across 99 development projects, and, and then there's, it's, it's out of a $5 billion initiative. And, you know, I used to think a billion dollars sounded like a lot until I watched them start throwing hundreds of billions across the sea to do things. You know, some things I agree with, others I don't. But, you know, I mean, to throw $2 billion across.
It's help change.
I mean, of, of, of all the needs that we have in rural America, I mean, it's just look at like, look at the, just try to get good highways, you know, in, in our, and I, and I look at like, especially if we go out further west where there's even more limited population, but you still do need connectivity. I mean, there's places, who was I talking to on the phone? I wasn't one of you guys. I was talking to somebody for government stuff, coming up, or was I talking to Eugene? I was coming up through Kansas.
Oh, yeah.
There's the whole bottoms, that first quarter of Kansas, of the south there, seems like all the way across until you get over by Liberal and stuff, and then towards, back over to Wichita, there's an area in the middle there that you're still in a no comm zone. I mean, the, your, your cell phones, and, and I thought it was just maybe Verizon. But, you know, some of the other guys got US Cellular types and AT and T, that, that for them, too. I mean, so there's still that communications deserts out here out west, you know, I mean? And so these kind of things, they make it sound like, well, we're giving you $2 billion. I said, yeah, but you're just giving it to the cities out in the rural area, the bigger communities, and you ain't doing it. You know, I mean, we need more fire breaks out west, you know, to help keep these fires viable, make these fires viable. You know, give us a place to actually try to stop it, you know, the fire breaks. And, and then they use them for logging to get in and out, and, and it's already a proven fact that efficient logging and proper logging, which rebuilds the forest, actually helps prevent the forest fires, because you don't have so much of the, the kindling on the forest, on the forest bed. Now, some of that is actually what creates the next layer of, of, of good soil. So, you know, you gotta, you gotta weigh out your demons here, but.
A giant sequoia tree will, will not sprout a new sprout until it's burnt fire.
Yeah, excellent point, right there. And then acorn, or they're, the seed, and same thing with the pine cone. You know, I mean, you gotta have a, that fire's, bust that all up, anyway.
Information I did not ever know before, so.
I mean, but it's just things that I, when we were, when we were talking about rural.gov, I was just thinking.
The fall prairie will only grow thicker and stronger because the fire burns it off.
Nature taking care of itself.
But that's, and, and you know, a lot of our forest fires are actually nature intended, lightning strikes, et cetera. But anyway, I, I mean, but it, at least on the, on the silver lining, at least somebody's fighting for monies for our rural area, because you know what? We do feel like Cinderella a lot of times, and we ain't got to the, we ain't got to the bowl yet, you know? So, anyway, that's, that's on that, uh. Caucus business, uh, let's see. Not really. Tool kit now, let's see. Uh, then we, we got to talking about what we're gonna be doing at the, the legislative conference, uh, there'll be the more on the B, that's the broadband equity access and development, uh, you know, that's actually brought a lot of money out to counties like ours, because we've got a lot of underserved communities within us, you know, whether it's our Latino population, or just because we're economically not as strong as some, a lot of our counties anyway. So that's, you know, that's broadband in particular, and that's what I was just getting at about the, I mean, I don't know what the broadband's like in that part of Kansas. And I'm using that for example, because it frustrates me every time I drive up through there, you know? But uh, the uh, I gotta assume that their broadband's in a whole lot better, you know, I mean, do, do they have enough that serves their farm populations, you know, I mean, I drive through there and I see a lot of old farm equipment, I don't see.
Yeah, that's a different area, though.
Yeah. They're, so they're, they're a lot, lot more economically challenged, you know, and, and we've got places like that in Iowa too. You go down to Southern Iowa, some of our, our farmers are operating with, you know, used, used equipment, you know, and. Yeah, so, and I mean, they may be happy with that, but then it just makes me wonder, you know? If they're not operating the, the big machinery that's gotta have in it, in connectivity in it, you know, to help with GPS and all that stuff. I mean, are, are they being kind of cheated so they can't use their good bottom ground for farming and stuff like that? So I just make, just things that I think about in a day's time.
Take them, and I think a lot of them guys, and then there is they farm for the insurance checks.
That's probably true. There's some of them that probably farm just because they like to smell the dirt and cow.
But they, I think a lot of them places, they know with the productivity of the soil that they're just gonna get an insurance check.
Yeah, great point.
Ones that farm river bottom grounds that flood out. So many, we usually have a ten.
Yeah. Good point.
Do it every year anyways.
That insurance thing.
Oh, but anyway, I say any farmers like to trade, farm for insurance checks, it's just, they enjoy the business.
It's business.
When is the next NACO meeting? Is that the one out in DC?
Yeah, and that'll be, when do I fly out? Next Friday I fly out.
Will you miss a Tuesday?
Yeah, I'll miss that Tuesday.
Okay.
And I actually, you know, thought maybe I'd try to zoom in, but I've got meetings right.
They're gonna keep you busy the whole time.
Actually, I, we've got meetings on Capitol Hill on Tuesdays.
You know, it'd probably be you and Barry Anderson and.
Oh, yeah, Barry and what's the short fellow?
Rich.
Carl Van.
Richard Crouch.
Yeah, Crouch.
I'm sure Carl will be out there.
Kyle will be out there, uh. Stacker, and uh, then Latifah.
Yeah.
She'll go up.
Jay Myers will probably go.
Yeah, and then, and then we'll have engineers that actually, uh, Green County, uh, Wayne. Good engineer, he's a good friend of Paul's, he'll be out there.
Wade Weiss.
There you go.
He's a good dude.
Very, very good guy, and we, the only one, the only engineer that avoids me is the one that helped write up the thing for the So he don't pay, he don't, he, he don't, he'll walk by me in the hall, so, in any event, uh.
Happen on the back when he goes, say, good job, good job, good job.
I'll be going, oh, I, this is kind of neat, I don't know, I, hopefully I got a nice enough suit for it. My wife laughed when I read it to her, our loop, our the large, the large urban caucus and the rural caucus, and then the board meeting is actually at the French Embassy in DC. At least, don't you be cussing them out.
Chinese, you might be able to sequester some money for us.
Just for your best.
A vodka, Russian.
So. So I'm, I'm really, I, I mean, for some of the stuff I've already, I've already got myself, I'm gonna be running the whole time, you know, cause they, they wanted to know. Uh, well, I fly Friday, so Saturday through Tuesday.
This, this week?
Next, next week.
Next week.
So you and Kyle won't be gone at the same time?
No, we won't.
He'll be gone next week, he'll be going in the weekend. Which I get, I mean.
If you come back.
They're gonna pack a lot in a short period of time.
But I think it's awesome that you already had information. We don't have to hear it and read it.
It goes back to, you want your voice heard and you don't want to be overwhelmed by urban areas.
Yeah.
You gotta have rural folks on these committees.
Yep.
You know, and that's what I've been watching, like, a lot of our leadership positions are the larger county people. You know, now the whole, the guy that is our, our ag committee chair though, he's from a small uh, county up in upstate New York, very sharp fellow too.
But he, I, I'm really proud of our group that does represent us at NACO, though, if you look at you, agriculture, trucking, Barry Anderson, hog farmer, farmer, Richard Crouch, farmer, Kyle Stacker, he's in the ag business and stuff up there, I mean, we are represented well for rural Iowa at, at a national level.
And they're all very sharp people that are well liked, I mean, you look at like Grant and uh, Grant Veder.
Yeah, Black Hawk County.
Yep, they, they're very well thought of people, in fact, Grant is uh.
Very sharp and.
Uh, gets up there and he is the, one of the, uh, shoot, that's what I'm thinking.
Lyricist or, he always does the limericks.
Yeah, he does the limericks, and then he also is there, you know, for, for basically Robert's rules stuff, I mean, he gets up there and he's.
Parliamentary.
Thank you, parliamentary.
He's retiring.
Did anybody else have anything they want to squeeze in real quick, or do you? I had a thing last night that said, keep it rolling, so.
Vice Chair, keep her rolling.
Hey, I yield my time to time.
Alright, very good.
Okay.
Perfect.
I had Central Iowa, uh, kinda basically uh, repeat some of the stuff that, that Kyle was, they've been updating their handbook. And Kyle Stacker is actually our chair at, at Central Iowa, so. Um, there's a lot that says on Kyle on here, but that's not you, obviously. But uh, they're, they're updating their handbook, so I mean, it's, if it seems like we're over talking about handbook, it seems like that's all I got in my life anymore, if somebody's over, we're redoing a handbook, so it is seems like something we need to be doing.
Even the county say.
And then there was an update on the local law enforcement over there, they're having some issues because of the adults served, and it's the females that are, are more violent. Some of these that they're having trouble with in the facility.
And that surprises you, Kyle.
Well, you know, it doesn't surprise me, I mean, but, but it's making it difficult for the law enforcement, because they just don't like to go contend with them, because I mean, they'll, they'll do some pretty nasty stuff. And, you know, and a couple of them, I mean, you can look through here on the, on the offenses, you know, it'll say where it's male or female, obviously they don't give any names or anything, but but uh, some of the worst charges, the murders and, and attempted murders and stuff, there, a lot of them are female, and, you know, juveniles.
Doesn't shock Kyle at all.
And so, and, you know, well, no, I mean. Yeah, but you know, you know, when you, when you think about it, law enforcement, there's some of them won't deploy to a call there. You know, so that's, that's kind of an issue, but they're still, but anyway, to deal with some of the stuff, whether it's tasers or the, you know, they use the met, the spray and stuff like that, uh, that was something that we discussed at the meeting and, and uh, what they want to do is basically at the end of the year, cause the law enforcement, it's just like ours, they got budget issues. They wanna reimburse them for anything they use, at the end of the year, police turn in, you know, they use this many cans of mace or whatever the case may be. And then Central Iowa's gonna reimburse them, we're trying to find ways to work with our law enforcement, because it's a tough job for, I mean, it's a Dennis and, actually smaller than Dennis and size community that's got this big facility there, you know? So it's a, it's a challenge for their law enforcement, you know?
Do they have uh, female uh, deputies in, at that?
Well, see, it's, and it's the, the local, the police force in, in Eldores actually, when it takes care of it, and I, I don't know, you know, I never even thought to ask that.
Feel like you should have a female that can go in there, you know, cause a lot of times it's just the handling of them that gets to be a little bit, so a female comes in and.
Might help.
Might help.
I sure wouldn't say it would hurt. Then we, uh, there was billing discussion, I don't, we don't have so much trouble, I did see on this time, where we haven't shown that we've had inmates there, but we had a bill from them. Is that, have you seen a bill from them lately?
I wouldn't, I mean, I would eventually, but Nate would have.
Hasn't came from Nate yet, okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Alright, so anyway, but Bob, Bob Thode over there in Webster County, and obviously if you look through Webster County stuff, they get plenty of there's plenty of people going through over there from Webster and Marshall and them different, there's a couple of them that got a lot more story, a lot more activity. And there's, it's kind of confusing for them, because it could be a, uh, you know, it could be a Crawford County kid that was over in Webster County and got arrested there.
And usually, our book billing issues come from it's.
Oh, which county the bill?
There you go.
They tried to bill send that to Webster County, Webster County kicking backs, it's not our kid.
There you go.
I mean, until that gets sorted out, yeah, it gets laid in limbo quite a while.
Exactly.
Six months, maybe?
Oh, it could be, yeah.
Yeah, easy, if you look at, if you look, if you look at our aging report, you'll see some of that stuff's pretty far off. And that's usually the generator of it, and they've got an auditor, it's just driving her bat crap crazy over there in Webster County. So anyway, that was one of the things that was discussed, and so I mean, if you see anything, please let me know and I'll, I, you know, or even call over there and and talk to somebody on Tony's staff, and, but obviously, we could talk to Nate first and see, but Nate doesn't always know for sure either. Uh, legislative position, you know, we talked about them paying their, do, do everybody pay in their fair share importantly, or most importantly, the state?
Yep.
Uh, problems with current program, I mean, I got a list of stuff here, unless you want me to shut up.
Well, Craig is having something, so.
Craig, what did you have?
I just got a minute.
Yeah.
Okay, you just got a minute, okay.
That's all you're getting.
I'm, I'm looking through here to see how much is in, that we haven't talked about with Kyle. Uh, cap on juvenile detention beds, that's one of the problems that we have, obviously, we talked about that. So that's part of the legislation that we're working on.
Working on.
Uh, to get that to where we don't have that cap, or at least lift it way up, I don't know why we wouldn't need a cap. Pay all detention centers based on the total bed days instead of expenditures, right now, the state reimburses by how much you spent. Well, you got Des Moines, they're gonna have all kinds of bills, and you aren't serving the service and as many kids as you should, and Polk, I should say, not Des Moines. But then you turn around and, and we've got a ton of bed days and we're not getting comped for that, you know, and I suspect you're much different than that.
Woodbury County, they'll sit there empty.
Yeah.
But have all staff on hand.
And then their expenses, and they're getting paid to do nothing.
That's why it needs to be reimbursed off bed days, not expenses.
Yeah, so, and then that's the solution, and then uh, provide more state funding is the final thing, you know, because you, it's, it it's not equitable on how they pay different ranges, you know, whether it's a nineteen dollar or an eighty six dollar bed date, you know, I mean, they're just the state's got its rules that it made forever ago that don't apply today, and so those are some of the big things we actually talked about, I can pass this sucker around.
So how long do you think it's gonna take to get all that fixed?
Oh, God, I mean, I hope we're still on the board by then, cause so, it won't happen this year.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for that report.
Anyway, you guys can look through this thing here, the, the ones in the middle, I got under a paper clipper, what checks they wrote, you don't have, you, you don't want to look through that.
Okay, now I need a minute and thirty seconds. Is that, uh, on the county farm is contacted Lisa Gallagher last week on Friday, and she is in a training session yesterday and today, and is one of the persons leading that training session is an expert in public ownership of C R P lands, and so she was gonna get some input from that person and get back either myself or Kyle, and I said, would you know something prior to the night, our nine o'clock supervisor meeting on Tuesday? She said, I'm not sure, if I do, I'll call you.
Very nice.
We haven't heard from her.
Yeah.
So we should have something by next week. Secondly, just so you're, you're aware, I know we don't give any money to Crawford County Hunger Fighters, but since it is a countywide organization, just give some information on that. Is the Hunger Fighters is, uh, they are now delivering three hundred and sixty four backpack sacks every Friday to grades K through five in seven elementary schools in the county. Um, they also work with the Sioux City Food Bank, and this is for twenty twenty three, they operate a drive for food distribution on the third Tuesday of every month, and in twenty twenty three, they distributed over eighty six thousand pounds of food to an average of two hundred and seventeen families each month. Uh, their operating budget is fifty two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, and ninety seven point three percent of that goes to purchase food.
Where does that money come from? How, is it donations?
Person that contributes, that is a member, and it's all by businesses, individuals that contribute to it.
No grants or anything?
Grants, no public funding, it's just people.
That is amazing, that is a great program and.
It's kind of organized by the churches, but it's just a lot of people.
It is absolutely.
Well, the main organizer, I mean, my father-in-law Ron Han is the one that organizes, that does most of it, but I mean, he's eighty six years old, so I don't know how much longer.
That was a great update.
And I just wanted to give, um, on West Central Community Action, I told you last week that we had a meeting and I forgot to bring some information. And I guess I just want to share some success stories that government dollars sometimes do actually get down to the people and help them. And so this is just with uh, F A D S S, which is Family Development Self-Sufficiency. And uh, this is participant, she was single, has three kids, one with cerebral palsy, one with mental health issues. Uh, she's receiving F I P, which is the Family Investment Program, which is direct cash dollars from the state to her. Um, and she was doing good daycare, she was looking for employment that was more stable and offered better pay, she was going to college full-time. Uh, barriers, issues, she needed stable employment, mental health issues, uh, needed to organize slash declutter her home. She had children with physical and mental health issues, goals accomplished, and she went into the program on June fourth, uh, June fourth of twenty twenty one, she exited the program on December twenty first, twenty twenty three. So she, goals accomplished, she obtained associate's degree from Iowa Western Community College. She found a different job, she currently makes nineteen twenty three an hour for forty hours a week selling insurance. She started taking medication for depression, she organized her house, she moved to a bigger home, she got engaged. And the family situation had exited, it says the participant is working full-time and is stable, she has reliable transportation, her kids are doing well in school. She is planning her wedding and will be married September of twenty twenty.
A success story.
So. That was not.
Not, okay, just, yeah, but that is absolutely.
Right, and I, I guess when I see those, I like to share them with us as a board, so at least we know that, hey, some of the stuff that we do.
This is like Good News Tuesday.
It works, sometimes it works. And it's so hard sometimes when you, to get the dollars to the people is where it needs to go.
But she had a lot to overcome.
Exactly.
A lot to overcome, and it just shows that, yeah, yeah, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Alright.
I got one quick thing, less than thirty seconds. I want to thank Craig for making Crawford County Board of Supervisors look like Superstar.
It was very nice, listen, that was just everything.
You probably asked, talked to you a lot longer than that. That was their favorite.
And I don't know if you noticed on Pam, when Pam talked, that, you know, they have their name underneath there, but they misspelled Pam's name, they spell it S O E S M A N, and when they, when she got, when she interviewed each of us, she said, state your name and spell it. So we all stated our name on camera and spelled it, and they even got it wrong, even though Pam spelled her name saying, here's how you spell my name, they still got it wrong.
I was looking that up on my phone.
Okay, right.
Very cool. What's that?
Very proper words for county supervisor.
Very, very good, yes, very good, so.
You're welcome.
Anybody else, or should we have Ben come up and we'll finish later?
Ben, come on up.
Down here, if you're the only one that, that's working today, we gotta keep you working.
Yep, 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 yep.
Well, I'm gonna be pretty brief, I got a webinar going on downstairs on the oversight of a weight permitting and uh,
Part more than I probably need to know.
Probably more than.
It's uh, it's a good webinar. I don't know how good these are, but uh, the only thing on it is the, the contract that we're wanting to award, but again, like last week, I have yet to see it. So, I'm not sure, uh, yeah.
Well, then we can't take action.
Yeah, well, I spoke with Paul this morning, all, all we can do is table it until next week, so, uh, I haven't seen the, the contract.
Four and five will be tabled, but uh, pardon, four, uh, item four and five will just. We'll be tabled.
Right, right.
Just no action taken.
Yep.
No action taken.
How's the roads holding up?
Well. Uh, we're got one, so soft roads yesterday, and I anticipate that's what we're gonna be battling next year with things stopping, but.
I've been pretty good for what they've been through with the, I bet they're drying off pretty darn decent.
I haven't run into much myself.
The sunlight's out, though, you know, you get those sunny days and.
Yeah, this is one where a drip, you know, where it might not got pushed back as far as we, we could have, you know? And draining out onto the road, and making it soft, and it's easy to see what's causing that issue, but uh, um.
I think if all are going in the ground, you're right too.
And it's still dry down there.
I think there was frost until it's still.
I think there was frost until it's still, or the ground was warm enough, then it come up, melted that frost.
Like a blanket.
It is.
Like a blanket.
Still here's warming up the ground.
It did, because.
I don't know, there's a lot of sod by it.
Yeah, we do.
You know, we were looking at some of our crooks, even you'd think that they would start to really flow with all the melting, and they haven't. I think it's just all those cracks out in the ground that just is soaking every inch up.
Yep. Yep, yep. And, uh, I anticipate, uh, if it melts off, uh, I anticipate to work in the, in the spring here, uh, we'll, we'll begin quickly, you know, we'll be out there, uh, we should, all weather.
But it is kinda crazy, but you think about after we went through that blizzard and how much snow we got, like our ditches are full, we have nowhere out, where else to go? This, this could really be a troublesome thing if we get another snowstorm, and then all of a sudden it turned out to be forty degrees and melting.
Yep.
It is key that we let our operators work that snow back and get it off the roads so you don't have a lot of issues. I mean.
This is where it shines. Now it's not melting on the roads and running down the roads. And they got it pushed back, they spent all, heck, I, they worked to, I believe Thursday last week, they, they were still pushing drifts back, you know, getting them as much as they could. And they finally said, oh, we, we got her back, right? They got it where it can be.
Have you had very many phone calls?
Not a lot, no. Uh, regarding the, regardless of, uh, a couple were, uh, maybe some dead end roads that might have got missed, uh, but, uh, we've been adjusting as it comes. But, uh, nothing, uh, nothing too concerning anyway. So, uh, I think guys, uh, you know, especially, you know, newer operators, some of them are, I know, might not be asked from other with the routes, uh, um, they, uh, they're getting her figured out pretty good, so. Like there's some roads that we call them, I said, we, I didn't know what we'd take. So there are those.
Well, I put you on a mission like you do. I have my broken leg. I drove every mile of this county, calm stops, some.
Really?
I don't know if it was needed, but that's what I did.
How long was that?
I've been two thousand and thirteen.
Is that where that stop sign map came from?
That's literally all, there's your car again.
I don't know what we had happen, but. Causing the activity.
Oh, sounding good.
Everything's going good.
Yes, except for that, they're, we're still beginning training down on the, 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 uh, time management thing. Uh, Amy went down and trained another group of guys this morning.
Good, yeah.
They're all being pretty receptive to it. And, uh, it might take a little bit of, uh,
Change is hard. There's no turning around.
Change is there, we'll, and, uh.
Go into it with an open mind, it helps.
They're being very open-minded about it, so.
I've been rethinking the stockpile. I'm at a fleet of trucks headed west this morning.
They're gritting it off of, uh, kind of K R stuff there.
Oh, they're all on crushed concrete, okay. All right.
What's that?
So it must be all crushed concrete from K R outfit today.
Oh.
I met, I met a fleet of trucks headed toward Charlotte loaded, so.
Yeah, okay. I wasn't sure if they were starting to haul out of there or not, so.
Yeah, no, I.
They must be, and they're, uh.
They were loading this morning when I came.
I didn't see where they were loading.
They were crushing out at the, um, uh, uh, concrete plant there, uh.
Crushing out here, too.
Yeah, they just finished there. They haven't done it yet, but, uh, and they're gonna be crushing out the, the dome.
Okay.
Possibly tomorrow.
Brandon and one of the dump trucks were sitting at the stock sign there and thought, the hell, that's how I knew. I don't want the hell, we opened K R now?
That's a good material.
Yeah.
No, place it where they want it, and we're looking at, gonna do some shoulder and what have you, and, uh, get her, get her all out, so.
Good.
All right.
Get her done.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
And that kind of crushed concrete, you put it, you put a user on the bar, you get it in there, no moisture on it, it almost forms back to concrete.
That's why they like to use it for shoulder and material, because it almost re-bones itself back together. It's hard.
If you could get it clean enough, to me, that'd be a great product to dump in some of our really soft spots in the spring.
Oh.
But the problem is, it's hard to get all that wire out of it.
Yeah. It's fairly, uh, it's fairly clean. I mean, it's, it's hard, I, yeah, I think it's good material. They don't break down like limestone.
No. But imagine if you could dump that.
Take concrete with rebar in it?
Yeah. It'll stick the rebar out.
It will. When they grind it.
Didn't it got like a magnet something or other in there?
I don't know if it's a magnet or a system through a screen and.
My dad and I, we crushed concrete once somewhere down in Omaha, actually being close to the new city. Oh, yeah, I had a good friend down there. I got him set up with this. They were doing it together. And the magnet on that thing was huge. You couldn't hardly stick a scoop shovel by it, or you.
Sucked it.
Sucked it right over there. It was very neat.
Tell you what I like, and that the railroad screwed up and when the floods were over there in Nebraska, actually, they screwed up. They bought up and started buying that slag that you see down here at Chows, and that's what I used on my lot. Oh, my God, does that make a base. I got the base stuff. It's really hard to walk on. It looks like lava stone. And it's slag is what it is, and they busted it up. And it, it don't melt, it don't break, it's just there. And I mean, that made a base there. I've got Lake Rosberg there every spring in it, and it never gets salt.
Man, don't ever trip and fall on it. You look like a peeled potato.
But then I took and did a layer of the smaller stuff over top of it, and it kinda all blends in there, and it just kinda all locks in. It's pretty good stuff. That's what they've got on their lot down here, too, the showers.
All right. So we, Greg was here, now, uh, so we'll just stay in order here, uh, discuss and take action on the agent of record, all lines of recovery. So in our packet, we had all of the different, the dental and, uh, all of that over there. Uh, so I believe that we need to, uh, have a motion to approve the agent of record for our.
And switches it over to Holmes.
I, I, I will just say briefly that I did call Scott Larson, Business Manager at Denton Community School District, and about their relationship with him, and he said it has been night and day, the amount of information they get, and, um, the ability to work with someone on a day-to-day basis if we need, that he said it's just, they have been fantastic.
That's a great recommendation, uh.
So, cause one of the reasons I called him, something that we can discuss at a different point in time, but the Denton Community School District pays seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and six cents, I wrote it down, I'm trying to remember, for an individual uh, policy, that's what they pay the employee. And if the employee chooses anything other than individual, meaning if they choose family, if they choose, uh, spouse, that's what they get. They get the seven eighty-five, and anything they choose, the employee pays anything over that.
That's what it was, I think.
So, I mean, I think that's something we're looking at our healthcare costs and what they are, and how they keep on going up, that maybe at some point in time, all we offer is just the employee. And if the employee wants to add a kid or add a spouse or anything, it's at their cost, not at the county's cost.
We saw that last night in the budget of the assessor, where we couldn't understand why it was going, they were budgeting so much, where they know that possibly one of their employees would be going to the family plan.
I know, but it still seems all damn high.
I know, I think it was inflated. I'm gonna investigate that a little bit.
Yeah, it's hard.
Seth can adjust that a little bit.
Real hard to, uh.
And they may be anticipating, you know, the assessor, whoever, you know, uh, either whether it's the assessor position that's new to the office or someone from below that's new to the office, they may be anticipating a family.
They, they even have an H S A plan. I mean, their current plan, they can give a one thousand dollar deductible. They could choose a four thousand dollar deductible, um, and that plan is only five hundred and eighty-five dollars. So then that difference, that two hundred dollars a month difference, goes into an H S A that the school does one time a year. They take that two hundred times twelve months, twenty-four hundred dollars. They dump that into the person's H S A.
I like that.
So.
I like that.
I mean, and they, you know, so those are different things that we can look at, I think, moving forward.
Match any of that H S A, sometimes they kick in and move.
They don't match. They just do whatever that difference is. They put in one time a year, and then the employee can also contribute to that H S A.
Let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Like in my, did, did, I mean, I don't know if you'd even ask this, but like, uh, with my insurance, I have to get the whole policy. I need it for the wife yet, but I don't need it, you know, because I got, I've got full medical from the V A. So, but the wife doesn't, so I gotta get a policy. And then I, I mean, is there a way that you can do that for the, um, you see what I'm getting at? How the hell does that work?
And you have to cover the.
You mean if you.
So I would have to either keep getting it for me.
He just wants it for his wife.
I don't think we have one just for the spouse. It has to be employee and spouse, because.
You have to go on the exchange and purchase it.
But the, the good thing about this motion that we're gonna have is we now then have those same options.
Right, exactly.
Lower all this.
Exactly.
And so, uh.
And I think we're working with a good partner that will go through that with us.
Highly recommended. So I think that's great to bring up. So we need.
I'm glad you talked to Scott, too, though. It's nice to hear that they.
Right. He said they made the change probably ten years ago. And he said, since they've made that change, it's just been, he said, it's night, night and day.
Night and day, I love it. So we need a motion to, uh, approve the agent of record for all lines of coverage.
I just, like, do we need to have a motion to do this? Cause we approved them as being our agents last week.
Take action.
You didn't.
We didn't take action.
There was no action last week.
Okay.
We just got the paperwork.
I'll make motion that we change them.
To Holmes, Murphy, and Associates. Okay, I, I just want that noted in the, in the motion.
All right.
I will second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion?
I thought long and hard about this, Jake, you know, we're going away from the local. You know, but you kinda seal the deal with what you said Scott said, so.
No, I mean, I think, you think about that, because we're supporting a local business with our premium dollars, and they're employing people that live in this county. And I think that's important to take into consideration. And it's also important to look at.
Saving tax dollars.
Saving tax dollars on the other side.
People.
What?
Right.
Can I hear?
Yeah, I just walked in.
Did they?
Yeah.
Too late, you got approved.
We haven't voted yet.
We were just talking about it, making the motion, so.
You brought the lawyer back? Switch me out this time.
All right, we're still in the discussion part, but we have a motion, a second. We're discussing it, is there more discussing, uh, questions for, uh, the agent of record change?
Do you have any, any questions?
All right, discussion is ceased. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, uh, that has passed, okay?
Get to work.
How you guys throw all the way up there for that? Thanks.
Well, and, uh, Craig had a, a great recommendation from the school, which is very, very nice, and, uh, day and night differences, kind of a whole from.
I thought the, we thought the, uh, county engineer was going for like ten fifteen or ten thirty, so.
Well, he's ill today, so he was not here. And since we don't put our times on anymore, they'll get us to move on and keep, keep it rolling is what they tell me every day, is making keeping it rolling.
So we're looking forward to all the different options that we can discuss.
Signing, there's two copies of everything that we can get together. So sign the back and then sign each page. I think they're all flat.
I want me to tell, I don't want.
I know, and then we're gonna.
Know where I hang out.
Joe, I gotta ask, who is faster in track, you or Steve?
That's the race, probably. You should ask him that answer. I, I think, yeah, even if you're below me, I don't know, his senior year, I think, we were thinking of the guy that was faster.
Here, back here.
Back here, and then the flag, that's whatever's flagged on both of those.
I tried to make it as easy as possible for me to.
Right, we did, Megan made two copies, so.
You do.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys will know like.
Bided up.
What kind of their next steps, and what?
Um, so I assume we'll take the letters with us today?
Yes.
And we'll go back, we'll get those sent to Walmart today. Sometime, like Jeff said, they have like a, a seven-day waiting period, like, you guys can change your mind the other evening, or try to change your minds, uh, that usually doesn't happen. And then we'll be named officially agent hopefully by February first. So we can start asking for alternates, send a quote for I G C P, to get other written, things like that, so. We'll start working this week immediately.
So. Once the agent that we can pull all the record ourselves out, if, uh, we have to do it through, you guys, once or they use it, we can, we can take care of everything.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
All righty, so.
You need both of them signed, just Gina and that one.
I did?
Doesn't look right.
Did you guys say it was Craig at this floor, or who was it?
I mean, both.
My contact is Scott Larson.
Okay, okay, guys.
Business manager.
This is our copy.
Yes.
She was very stamped.
Nothing but good words. Said they made the change about ten years ago, and he said, since that time, he said, it's just been night and day.
I think she's missing the second.
Information that you guys provide.
We'll let them take theirs, and we'll get the other one passed back around.
Utilize you guys as much as they want, meaning you're, if you don't want to, no, if they don't request any information, I guess.
Hand them back.
It's not provided, but if they want, whatever Scott said, whatever we want.
Those are our copies.
We mentioned, we said, we'll probably at least send you guys monthly claims reporting all that stuff. Probably be quarterly, so I know, I'll be, so obviously, everyone's got a lot going on, employee needs anything else, so. That's why we have a team of three of us plus the.
Oh, she's bad. She started paying a ten.
I started eating.
It'll happen.
It will happen.
Apparently, so I'm looking forward to that. Management or supervision of our self-funded portion that we do, that it'd be, we need direction there. And we need some professional guidance.
Even Ty missed.
So we're not just, I mean, we're just going, right, we're just going to the wall. We need to know specifically, I guess, where we're at.
I wish I saw my name.
That's big.
All right.
This is ours. Ours are stamped, so.
All righty, so, next item is Greg Miller, Emergency Management.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks for grabbing up.
Well, you can take the letters home with you. Hey, Greg. I go for months and don't see you, then.
Yeah, I know.
Every day for today.
Um, we had our board meeting last night for, for the commission meeting, and, and the budget was passed.
Okay.
So, and also, um, I was gonna ask.
So what budget was passed with the mayors?
My budget.
Your budget?
Well, they'll actually pass it after you have.
Uh, they'll be after the, yeah, the, the budget was passed, now we have a hearing.
Does it take two hours?
No, 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 we're pretty quick.
Um.
Have you gotten any checks from the Weather Service yet?
I would.
No. And I asked, I asked.
So that's the Emergency Management?
What's that?
I mean, is that the budget that you said was passed?
Yeah, yeah.
And that is overseen by the mayors, I guess?
Correct, the mayors, one supervisor, uh, and, um, the sheriff.
Okay.
Anything changes?
That's the commission, that's the.
We just say.
And that's one of the committees.
Ties on that committee.
Yes. And, and then, um, on the twenty-second, uh, the, the chief from Manila and myself are gonna sponsor a T I M S class, T I M S, which is, which is Incident Management.
Okay.
And you guys talked about a long time ago, many, many years before they called it Tims, you would.
Yeah, we, yeah, we used, I used to teach that class, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's very, it's a very important, I know Paul does it, not annually, but every other year or something, he'll do, they'll be one of them coming out, that's his deal, but I think.
I hope I remember, we're gonna invite fire, EMS, like the tow truck drivers, um, Sheriff's Department, Police Department, I'm missing somebody, Paul. To, to this, and it's gonna be out at Boulders.
I think it's very important.
And, and the city's been nice enough to let us use Boulders, cause they don't have much going on out there.
You've got an in there, though.
Yeah.
Any room you want.
Yeah, you know, we're gonna take, I would, I would assume there may be eighty, ninety people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually talked to Scott down at Fire School, an old guy that's instructor from Webster County.
It'll be Kenny Holtz, who used to be a, um, he used to be a sheriff deputy here.
What's his name?
Kenny Holtz, Ken Holtz.
Okay, names familiar, don't have a.
Maybe he was on the fire department, I know he was, uh, deputy.
He did a couple of years.
See, not Lorenz, where's he from, Hartley?
No.
Up.
Up north.
Northwest Iowa. Sheldon, maybe, or?
Would be up in that Presbyterian conservative Republican territory.
I do.
That's all I had, but I just wanted to let you know what's going on.
I would highly please extend a overwhelming invitation to our Sheriff's Department. Cause after that accident.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, month ago, I.
We actually talked about that down at Fire School, I was.
I needed, I don't know, I wasn't there, I don't know the situation, but.
Yeah.
It's important that they are at least there to, cause if that would end up in a lawsuit or something.
I talked to Roger and he's, anybody that's not working is supposed to be at that class, so.
Okay.
And Jim's, Jim's on board, so hopefully we can get some people there as well as, as well as city police and.
Do what we can to keep our, but, uh.
Yeah, exactly.
If you just want one thing when you go, it's still worth going.
That could have been a lot worse than, wouldn't have what it was. Well, and, and another thing, if they were gonna close that fucking road for two, three hours, they should, the DOT should have been there and bought that whole thing.
Somebody should add some signing, John, there.
Absolutely.
Advance in the morning.
There was a combination of errors on that, maybe it was my fault, I don't know.
You, you have them invited to, to our local DOT. That's good.
I hope so, I, I don't know, but four hour class, what it is, they're gonna offer CEUs for, for the first responders and the, and, uh, EMS and fire, so that'll, that'll help.
Yeah, and then I know our.
Just kinda wanted to keep you informed of what's going on.
It will.
I spent.
It works.
Two hours with the weather service yesterday up at KDSN, so we can measure the snow for it, right?
Think you got that under your belt now, now you know how to do that.
Yeah, you had to get a white, get a white, big white pad and then, then you, you lay it out. Lay several of them out or just one out and then you use your ruler and you measure yourself. That's how they do it.
That sounds technical.
But where, but where it's, it's measured now is behind the building, well, that doesn't, that's where the drifts are and, and it's not, it's not their fault, they've done it for years. And, and it just, we invited the weather service to come.
When they're really cracking down on a snow measurement deal.
Yeah, and I told, yeah, the.
Priorities.
The snow police are gonna come get us.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
She didn't really need that.
The IRS taking care of that too.
So that's not an action that was used to.
Big thanks is on our snow.
I guess, well, the problem is, is that if, if it was, if it was a, um, two inches or an inch over our high of that day, we qualified for FEMA. There's, there's, there's the crouch.
Oh, so there's the.
I wonder what.
That's right.
Yeah, that's why I brought it out like.
No, I'm tracking.
They hate it when I ask why all the time, so.
Yeah, that's why.
Cause I just call you.
I sir.
Alright, well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
See you, Greg.
We'll see you again.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Greg, thank you.
Next year, same time, same place. Alrighty, do we wanna go to Sherry so that she?
Yeah.
Sherry, since you're here, we'll, uh, talk to you about the tax abatement parcels.
Hold up, you're the next contestant.
There we go.
Making mockery of this.
Karen, you're awesome, I wasn't sorry.
No, I think you're lying, he's straight.
Take one, pass it on, thank you for telling him, otherwise he thinks everything is for him.
Yeah.
Um, so this first one is, they're both on Tammy Quill, uh, Champ Conrad and Tammy Quill in Kyron. Um, you'll see from the top that, um, they've got taxes due from nineteen eighty-two, so this is really, this is a great thing. This is one I brought in front of you guys, uh, several months ago and requested that, um, we, we transfer this property to them. They have, um, they have completed the process and have taken deed and we discussed that once that happened, I'd come back and request abatement for the taxes and everything.
When did they get the deed for the property?
Uh, like December twenty-second.
So who owned the property prior to then?
It was a county held.
It was a county held, I gotcha, okay.
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 Some Ben Peterson.
It was a Peterson originally, but they weren't paying taxes, so it became county held.
Became county held, I see, I see.
And the total amount to waive would be eight hundred and a few dollars?
Um, very close to that, when I actually go into a bait, sometimes the software system janks it a little bit, but it's right at that, give or take a few dollars.
A few dollars.
Miss it the next one if you want. Alright, we're gonna, we can take the motion separately.
So the county hasn't taken any tax dollars, I guess, prior to nineteen eighty-two.
Right, we can do them together if you want. Second one?
Take one, pass it on.
That's right, to go back on the tax, oh, yeah, exactly, exactly.
So we're.
Big tax.
These just blank.
They're adverses up here laughing at the address.
Right.
Forty years.
Lot sixteen, lot ten and eleven, those are the actual, they're in Buier.
They're in Buier, you said?
Right.
The mighty metropolis of Buier.
Forty years, it's, what, about ten thousand dollars of taxes in forty years.
Forty years.
I was born in eighty-three.
I graduated.
Where's my ear?
You were fighting Russian, I was fighting Russians.
So, um, what's the witness here?
I'll move that we approved the tax abatement for parcels, uh, zero four, one four two zero two zero zero five and zero four one four two zero two zero zero nine.
Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion on that? At a poll vote, all in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye? That has passed.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry.
One more thing off your list.
Yes.
Alright, so now we can go back and, uh, set a time and date for the public hearing on land rent.
Simon.
Jumping a foot, not that it matters, you're jumping a gray page.
Employee wage publication.
I already put a little thing there and then we didn't actually do it, sorry, I did jump that, so we have a discussion, take action, employee wage, uh, publication, that was in your packet, everybody's wages are listed there and we need to publish that. Uh, anybody have any objection to that, otherwise I need.
I move we approve the employee wage publication for twenty twenty-three.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? Now the poll vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, that has passed. Alright, we can be on the task here. I believe now we are setting time and date for, uh, public hearing of land rent.
I mean, since we don't know, can we get it on the agenda for next week?
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, that means we're table on that.
Table.
No, since we're taking action, do we know?
No action, no action taken.
Alrighty, I do believe we're down on a discussion on the HIPAA compliant, which was also in our packet and information was emailed to us.
Pretty in pink.
Pretty in pink, uh.
So I heard from Beth Manley from ISAC and that information was all in here. Um, cost of a county is nineteen fifty, um, returning counties are seventeen fifty, so subsequent years would be less. Um, the startup is July first, we could start now, but we're gonna pay the whole thing. We're gonna pay the whole, there's not like a prorated rate, start in the middle of the year.
Wait till July.
We are, we're just better, I mean, technically if we were to end it with Gary, we'd probably still pay less, even if we started intermittently.
Right.
Because of the thousand dollars a month, anyway, but it's, I think it's more clean.
More clean?
More clean, cleaner.
Cleaner. I think they've improved is what they provide and they've gotten better and they had, I had a best say about working with Gary.
Um, I can't remember if she mentioned it, or I feel like she did mention it. Um. But yeah, and then I asked her about like the training, cause well, that was one of our big questions was making sure our people got annual training, that we were always, um, informed about how to handle HIPAA and, um, PPI and things like that, um.
No, that's a ten thousand dollar a year savings.
Right, right.
Usually we don't have to discuss that for very long.
And so the termination of the existing contract with the Midwest Compliance Associates, which is Gary Jones, is, um, a thirty day. Um, let's see.
Written notice?
By either party, written notice to the other in the intent to terminate thirty days from the date of such notice. So we'll wait till, um, June one.
Right.
To write, to do that and maybe we'll do it at the end of May, we'll have action of the board and. Whatever, I do feel like Gary served a purpose and did a very good job. Absolutely. Getting us to where we needed to be, to be. Cause we were totally not compliant and.
Right.
Lack the training, um, the annual training and stuff.
Now that we're there.
Right.
We could just be in more.
Right, and if there's ever a big hit to HIPAA, HIPAA policies and stuff, you know, maybe we jump back on the Gary Jones bandwagon and get hit, cause he, Gary was more hands-on. If we'd have tried to do the compliance with Beth Manley, it would have been a lot more work and the type of work we just don't know about. You know what I mean, so.
I think that's what.
Yeah, that was the huge benefit of that, so, so yeah, I just put it on there as a discussion.
I think that's partially why, and I don't wanna speak for Beth, but, or ISAC on this, but I do feel like they have realized that and that's why they have worked with Gary more recently.
Yeah.
For big issues.
The police was concerned that ISAC just break out of that.
Why, I told her this morning, so. They were, oh, with Gary Jones now, so they have worked to improve and.
Right, the regions, you think Gary Jones, I think, or did at least, I don't know what they're doing now.
So we really, like you said, it's not a take action anyways, but.
Right.
Just get us updated.
That's the direction we're gonna go, wait till end of the fiscal year, go from there.
There we go.
Did you tell Beth that that's kind of the plan, tentative plan then?
Um, I will, I will tell her that, cause I had said something about, you know, starting now or sooner than later and she just mentioned that there was no, um, prorated amount and, so yeah.
Well, we got a plan, so just mark your calendar when we have to, uh, take action on that, if we do have to take action, will there be an action on that?
Um, probably to terminate that contract.
Alright, let's just.
I'm just agreeing with her, you know, terminate thirty days from the date of such levels.
Ty, remind me again with the.
Right, cause we wanted to end by the end of June, so we'll do it thirty days.
With my, with my.
When do they go to?
Forget about it. Be like, for another year, but we can only, we can only get out.
Alright, it's thirty day.
We don't have to wait for thirty days, we can tell them we're gonna do it, right?
As a matter, we can just take action, send the letter now, say.
We can't, because of discussion.
Come June thirtieth, we're done. Yeah.
Well, we just need to put it on the agenda or to take action then.
Do we ride the wave, think we're okay and terminate it now, save some money? We pay monthly?
We do pay monthly.
So.
And it would still, even if we paid the full ISAC amount, we're still gonna probably save a little bit of money, not much, it'll probably almost break even.
Well, a good point, I mean, if.
Right.
If you think we're in a good spot, that we, the only thing, we, we could terminate them.
I mean, I can get it on the agenda next week to take action.
June and thirty day.
Terminate that contract, go into the new contract.
Why wait?
Do we.
Right.
Run the gauntlet of, between March and July, we don't have any.
At all.
Oh, any help?
Just work through Amy.
Call on an hourly basis, couldn't you?
When something happens, you'll be the first person I call.
I don't wanna leave ourselves vulnerable.
I know.
I don't wanna leave ourselves vulnerable.
I know.
If it's a, if it's a wash, I can see just waiting till thirty days before July first.
I mean, you might save a thousand, maybe two, depending on the timing of everything, but.
But everybody can be hired by the hour, you know?
Right, exactly.
Question or whatever, so.
Just my thought process.
Nope.
That's a good one.
Do we want it on the agenda for next week?
Well, we can put it on there.
We'll have a problem then.
Do we put it on the agenda for take action?
Well, yeah, it's Murphy's Law, you will have a problem.
Well, I say we don't go without coverage, but I think we should put it on the agenda to discuss whether we want to terminate it now, the thirty day.
Well, that wasn't a good move, was it?
Right. Everybody agree with that?
We're gonna put it on there and you can discuss it and figure it out.
We'll discuss it and take action next, uh.
Terminating and starting.
Right, there we go. Uh, tie on your detention center, Craig and I can't remember, how, what's the oldest person that would be in that detention center, what's the age, is that from thirteen to twenty-one?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So you have eighteen year olds that are, have those serious of charges against them and that.
You get twelve year olds that got those serious of charges against.
I was kinda reading through there and I kinda was taking notice of the F and M's. Kind of out.
Yeah.
Kinda scary on that, especially that second page where there's maybe a serious misdemeanors, but that one's, I mean, diluted with.
You got intent, uh, they're bound with intent.
Just makes you wonder what's the culture, I mean, that's, that's my concern.
I think it's video games myself. Lack of, uh, family.
I think it's a lot of the single parents and the poor kind of, and, and not the bulk of parents.
Right.
They're working two jobs, single parents probably got two jobs, stressed out, you know, like the one you brought up where she had the, you know, depression, anxiety and depression, I mean, you're, they're, that's a world that.
I would also say, probably drugs.
But I think fixes that, but, I suppose the separation of church and state, but you know, the, it, it's a tough road to home for a single person and I think that you probably would find a lot of them kids come from either a divorced home or a single parent home, or at least some kind of home that's got other mental or substance abuse issues and. I mean, they're, they're not, they're starting from behind before they even had a chance to get rolling.
I think a lot of that's, both parents had to go to work.
Yeah.
Even from being part of our church.
Discharge of the gun.
Both parents were stressed out.
That's what the officer was claiming.
And they still have trouble paying the bills and nothing makes mom and dad a dollar faster than bills.
That's crazy, I'm, I wasn't reckless.
That's the worst.
I see no citizens for input, there's, uh, Patty Mobauer, do you have any input today?
She thinks you're stealing an eye on her kid.
She just major her kid.
Alright, he's here. He was on the line. Hasn't bothered me yet today, so he's doing good.
Something to look forward to.
Make sure I get that done.
Alright, we have no one out there, so we could actually, um, have a break.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to bring him real quick, take a quick break and we could.
We, he and I are planning on going to day, our Capitol Day on the Hill.
First time ever, I've gone.
That's what I explained there.
No, that's in March.
March.
Oh. So, and that starts out like eight thirty in the mornings, we'll probably head out the, uh, night before, but maybe we could, as you're thinking about it, make a list or just at least let you and I Maybe we could, as you're thinking about it, make a list or just at least let Jean and I know of issues you'd like us to bring out.
What's the date?
March thirteenth. By thirteen, day on Capitol, and then it goes right into spring conference.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was saying, I was like. Supervisor, maybe, but it's what the statewide.
Spring conference, yep, never, never gone.
I'm gonna. I'm gonna write my, my uh, vacation up there, so everybody knows.
But like I said, if we're there.
You don't get a vacation, you're in the chair.
I know it.
You got a stipend and everything.
I know. You haven't even earned that seven fifty yet.
I earned it the first week, and when I went to Rotary last Thursday, I made everybody give me a dollar.
Hey, you can't use your position of power.
Espionage or something, right?
I think they call that racketeering.
Oh, there you go, is that racketeering?
We're still being recorded too, by the way.
She's an open book.
I will be, I'm not sure, but I will be.
It's an open book club.
Spring conference. I bet you will have. Spring conference starts the next day.
Wow, and you bringing treats for us?
We're all wearing matching mumus. So anyways, that's, so that means I won't be here, so you'll be in charge, so don't, which one? I can't reach it to write my name, I just put a little scribble.
Uh, March something.
I'm leaving on the third. You don't want me to stay on my.
Ah, don't let her get up there. We need a sturdy steps tool or something.
Well.
I'll bring my little giant in.
March fifth.
I'm leaving on the third, my birthday's not actually till the twenty seventh, but I'm celebrating early.
I'll give you plenty of time to bring the treats.
The whole month.
You're as bad as Amy then.
I'm going to supervisor's next week, but I haven't signed up for spring conference yet because I feel like I'm spending a lot of money going to NACO.
Well, we appreciate you going and I think it's valuable, so that's my two cents. Alright, we are officially in a break.
Priorities that we would. Is it legislative succession?
Yes, things that maybe, I mean.
I'm throwing it down there, uh, after I get off, I'd like to get into him, I'm gonna go have Megan. Uh, forward this stuff for me because it's not working, do I want to? We're gonna take a little tiny break. For uh, everybody just to stretch, stand up. So we're in a break.
Do your little Zen stuff, yeah.
We're in a break, I'm going to yoga, I'll be back. Like to eat your candy bars and that would be a good time.
Can you pause our recording this show? And we're just on a little break.
There's a little tiny break for.
Wait, let's say. Twenty-seven to fifteen or twenty, would that be enough to? Without limiting, wanting to go? That's the last thing I want is to set, when I say, well, I'd like to over sign on our budget.
Right. The one I say, what I'm saying is if we're going to. Be frugal and cut all the budgets by three percent or whatever, we just need to be prepared to figure out ours, how we're gonna cut ours by the same level.
Yeah, and, and that's why, you know, I put, I put all the stuff in as if we would go. And I mean, I cannot go to, to ISAC if you're wanting me to do the NACO stuff. And I, and I should say, cause I like doing the two, and I think it's good to have this, but.
I do too.
In the discussion. But.
And I do think, and we talked about that earlier in the meeting, you see very conservative counties going to NACO events. Like Clay County with Barry Anderson or Richard Crouch, I mean, cause they're seeing the value of having a rural voice being present.
Yep, yeah, I'm not just, I'm not trying to say the number's too high or nothing, I just. You know, you gave some papers last week and said do some figuring, so I kinda went through and. That our budget was up by sixteen percent, but that was driven by the school.
And mostly the NACO, cause I put all. I, I budgeted, and that's why I tell, I'm telling you this, I budgeted for all four of the big events that a rural county person would go to. There's legislative conference, now, I shouldn't say all four, there's three actually, but because I'm on that. In, you know, that international economic development thing, I mean, it's something that I, I would really like to check out this year. And if it doesn't look like it's something that it was very good for, but what's the potential there for economic development? I mean, you're, you got foreign people looking for places to. Sprout wings in America, I mean, it may or may not be something that we would benefit us, you know, but otherwise. As I was talking to some people down at the IFAC thing, that, that actually one of them knows, that goes out there for the economic thing. It's all big city people that show up for the state's group that goes down. I'm the only supervisor on that whole. You know, on, on the list that I seen of the people that go, I was the only, I'm the only supervisor. I cannot take it back to one other supervisor, I think it was from Nebraska.
And a little bit of difference too, when you look at the other budgets, we are talking one item only, schools. Right. Where some of these other budgets we're looking at reducing.
Though I.
There's different line items that might be questionable of.
Or, I just use this for example, just sitting here, she can defend herself, her budget was up by, I figured eleven percent for last year. But a bigger mover in that is her moving from.
Right.
To a family health plan, so.
Right.
So I, I mean, those are the things that. It seemed like a big number, but it's something that.
It's a legitimate.
It's a legitimate deal, and that's why I'm not just saying that, I'm not saying we need to cut it or nothing, I'm just saying. So what moved the budget higher that much?
So Carrie, what's the difference between a nine thousand fund and a nine oh three oh?
Where are you at?
You know, the.
Those are function numbers.
And what does that mean, those are function numbers?
It's part of our chart of accounts.
Okay.
And functions.
Cause I was just curious, when I looked through the supervisor's budget and I saw, huh, we have dues and memberships listed twice.
And they're.
And then I say, well, one's a nine thousand number and one's a nine oh three oh number, so they must be different. As to where you assign, do you know why there would be two different dues and memberships, why items?
Cause really nine oh three oh is part of the nine thousand.
Okay.
Function, but it just, and I would have to go look on the chart of accounts to find out what it actually.
Many dues and subscriptions?
Actually includes membership, it's ISAC's county dues come out of there, I believe, um.
But there's no reason that we would have two different dues and memberships.
I know, some of that I've never understood.
And, but money comes out of, you know, specifically those two differently, and that's why I was just.
I always thought I was, cause it broke it down further to what, what it was being.
Right, it's, it's, makes it more specific in the chart of accounts, what it's for, but.
Maybe just explain that, this is one was ISAC dues and then one was. You probably before, maybe in Terry's time, his last orders as well, we're gonna put NACO dues, we're gonna establish another line item.
Well, sure.
For that NACO dues specific. Or Hunter Canyon dues or something.
I'm gonna say, do we have any other dues like that type of thing that we have to pay other than just NACO and ISAC stuff?
I mean, we could.
I'd have to look, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't either.
Yep.
I mean, and I just kinda tracked them with what's, what, what had been hard.
And the other, I guess the other thing I'd seen with Terry's is hers. Now, if I remember right, I haven't done a check.
But.
Your budget is actually lower than last year.
Was thirty seventy-three.
I come up with eleven percent by taking out some, just taking out the election stuff completely above years.
Already seventy-one.
That's always a very.
Right.
Can be close, same, most of them are five people, that's probably our NACO and ISAC.
See, and mine fluctuates every year because I have different elections.
And that, right, I saw that.
And I think I explained that in my meeting.
Election this year versus primary election. Primary's more expensive.
Well, we have primary and city school in the same year.
Okay, okay. So then, were we gonna do anything with the salary for the supervisors? I mean, what was?
Well, it's approved with the three thousand, now we, nothing's been approved, nothing been approved, but what we.
That's what the move was, that's where we moved.
Well, that's what.
Not taken any action on compensation board.
Cause Ty, you've got the number in there as ten thousand.
I had it, but we.
This is readjusted to three.
Right.
It's one sixty-nine.
One sixty-nine?
Are they there?
Okay, oh, here, okay.
The ones you got new.
I went through there and.
I've been adjusted to the three thousand.
Gotcha, okay.
Then that readjusted, alright, thank you Terry, by the way.
Which actually after today, can we put that on the agenda for next week while you're gone?
I think we should make sure everybody's here when we do it.
I mean, and I guess we're gonna go through the budget as it put in as three thousand dollars.
Yep.
So are we sticking with the three thousand dollar or elected officials? Combined, I guess I was gonna.
Just if we're doing the percentages for the supervisors, that's a nine point seven percentage. I will tell you this.
That's a big percent for us.
A big percent. The last, the last three years that we've been here, we've adjusted ours lower and went to a zero last year.
I know we did a zero.
And it, and it actually did absolutely.
I thought it just reflected on me being the first year on the board that you gave me zero percent increase.
And we got zero, nothing personal.
I threw you the zero before that.
I think that was an attempt, attempt to show, we wanted to lead by example, right?
Right, and, and but.
And nobody heard anything by the time you get into the next budget cycle, so.
Right.
I mean, true, we treat ourselves, you, you know, to me, if we would lower everybody else down to two point five, you know, two seven, two, twenty-five hundred. Then we do that with us, obviously, but otherwise, I'm, I'm. So, I'm, I'm, I don't know that sacrificing ourself is approving anything, you know what I mean?
And I think that puts the second floor roughly around that four and a half percent.
If you use the dollar figure of three thousand dollars for department. Three thousand, well, three percent.
That's a little bit different for four point five.
Yeah.
Four point six percent. So. And that's.
Roughly.
Right, and that's kinda just.
Right, if yours is three, if yours goes up three, hers would go up.
Eighty-five percent of that.
Okay, it wouldn't go up three for everybody, go up third percenting.
Right.
Do you have anybody in your office that's at eighty percent of yours?
Statutorily impossible.
Assessors are not held to that same regard.
They are not, he uses that to his advantage.
They are not.
Okay, I did not know that.
Right. He uses it.
Used.
Well, I guess really the only thing in question is.
Maybe the new crew will be better.
If we're all on board with the three thousand. Cause one, we're gonna have to need to pass that sometime.
Yeah.
Two, if we're gonna stick to.
And that's for everybody.
All elected officials.
County attorney, all elected officials.
Yep.
Three thousand.
Which gives him like a one point five percent raise.
Yeah, that's flat out make up.
Right, so that's holding that back.
A little bit, cause some.
Cause what dollars do.
Yeah.
But they're the equalizer.
Exactly.
And that's one of the reasons we didn't. We had some lower end, you know, like secondary roles.
I like it, you still figure back to percent, but it does equalize out this.
Like last night, I mean. I'm, I'm guilty, cause I don't even know the newest, like, and the assessor's always named, but I gave her. Okay, gave her like a four and a half, where everybody, some of them are getting less than three.
Yeah.
Right.
But everybody got the same goddamn raise.
But we're equalizing it a little bit.
They got an equal raise.
Cause they got big raises.
Cause they're both, you know, while there's no assessor in there, the workload for all three of them escalated.
Right. When you say, Jean, that they got a raise in September, that was based on them changing their.
Position.
Position, right?
But, but still, I mean, uh, from the time you started, you know.
Right, well, Maddie just got her position changed too.
Yeah.
And nothing happened about that.
Saying nothing happened.
Did no longer.
She no longer. So isn't that a demotion? I mean, technically.
I see.
Technically.
It, it could be, it could be.
Right, I'm just saying.
And that's, that's written in code.
I'm not asking, not, what, you know, saying you need to do that, but we don't know what happened, even though Tracy piped in and said you can't legally. Reduce wages, but you can if their duty, if their.
Positions change.
If it changes.
Three, they were in the military, other people up and down chain of command all the time, they're getting wages increased or decreased, depending on how they were.
And that would be.
That had nothing to do with their, uh.
I would say that if you looked at, if you looked up labor laws, fair labor laws, we could be challenged by that. And that probably would be the closest thing we've really had to a lawsuit, at least.
I mean, I have a code spelled it out, free, as far as that goes.
Yeah, as far as.
Forty-six one last, yesterday, and it's done with longevity.
Well, let's, let's stay on track with supervisor's budget, so we can. I have one thing in question. We leave that twenty-seven, five hundred or?
Well, I put that, I, I tried to explain to you what I just did with your numbers, I mean, there's a little room to maneuver now.
I'm saying leave it for now.
Leave it for now, the, the other thing.
We, we won't use it.
People going to school.
I was gonna say that.
We won't move it around, it'll end up back in the general.
We're not putting that in there as a fluff in case we need, need money.
Right, it's not gonna go towards salaries or something else.
And I think that that's the elephant in the room that we all worry about, that when we leave these big numbers out there that look like they're inflated. That they don't use it, it's gonna be divided up among their employees.
And I guess we probably.
Depends on the department you're with.
Yeah, we scrutinize some of the other departments, cause they come in here and rub it in their face and say it's in our budget, you can't, you can't. Do anything about it.
Yep. And they do. You have.
I mean, we've never offered to give ourselves a raise mid-year.
Never.
Cause we can.
Right, well.
But if we had, if we had a.
Compensation board would have to make that recommendation.
But if we had a sec, if we wanted to hire a secretary for each one of us, like some counties have.
That's right.
Like, we could do that, if we had fluff in our budget.
I'd like to have one to take the NACO and take those for me.
I mean, you have.
Well, there, now we, now we're taking wives.
Yeah, I took my wife to County Leadership Institute in DC that time, she met a family in the lobby, went touring with them around DC while I was in class all day.
That sounds like your notes were getting taken very well.
No. So, well, let's leave, let's just check supervisor off, we'll leave that as is for now.
Yep.
Always still back.
Yeah, we can always come back.
Put the final budget all together.
Otherwise, all the numbers I kinda did mostly the same.
Right.
Check.
So.
Go down the list and.
Very limited.
I have, what do you have next? I got Audrey next in my package.
Yep. I got all kinds of marks on that page.
My new reports. And my A's.
They don't have any marks on that page.
I'm gonna bring my spreadsheet too, that explains where everybody's at. Percentage of me wise.
The way I was, and I may have been wrong, but these hundred and seventy thousand is three salaries.
It is, it's Amy, Mary and Michelle.
Amy, Michelle, okay, I didn't know, I didn't, I was, and there will all be, I know you're moving Amy, you told me up.
Eighty-five, the rest stayed the same.
The three of them, they are, I don't know what.
Mary's eighty-five.
We were at the auditor.
Yes, department two.
Which I figured is a five point six percent increase for all three.
Shouldn't be.
They put my new one to my old one.
Should not be.
Hundred and seventy?
I'm only getting four and a half, how can they be more than me?
Well, are you?
Moving Amy.
Are you on the right report? Are you on the, is it?
But moving, what was?
Eighty-five percent might skew his percentage, right, yeah.
It's only a two percent increase.
Salary department slash nurse slash tech slash OT.
I didn't know what that was.
A hundred and seventy thousand.
That's a five point five percent increase.
How much?
Five point five.
I had five point six.
Okay.
But, right, I just rounded, a hundred and seventy minus one sixty.
Nine, nine, five.
Nine, nine, five. Divided by one sixty, nine, nine, five, five point five nine.
Yeah. Dang it, she ain't here to give crap to.
Well, then I'm not saying, I just wanna make sure the numbers are right.
Right.
Yep.
Cause sometimes you're thinking about it, you.
How much would that hurt Amy, I mean, was Amy like at seventy and went to eighty-five or?
That's why I asked her, but she said it was only two.
I think she was at eighty.
Two percent.
Cause her total, total budget for the auditor is down thirty thousand.
Election, election, but.
I went through and subtracted all the election stuff off both years to try to come up with a fair number, you know, cause it's not fair to her department. Would you come up with, I think it was a eleven percent increase, but the biggest mover on that was the health insurance.
Health insurance. Cause health insurance right now is a ten, but it's gonna be, it sound like it's, that'll stay the same even with that, doesn't it?
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna, for budget purposes, a ten's a solid number to climb for, you know.
Well, honestly, you look through the line, second floor.
Hello, it's Kyle.
There's bear, I mean, there's things in there, but they're pretty bare bones, it's looking at salaries, I mean, I. You know, and at four and a half percent is kind of.
Okay.
At least for me, yeah, so we did a secondary road, landfill, the three thousand dollars. About. I just don't wanna see.
Snow is pretty deep up there every week or so.
Eight, ten, twelve percent.
It's drying off, so, it should be good, I actually moved it in the bay, so I can move some snow, so. It, it should be good to go. Alright, I'm not, I won't be there, but you can handle it, so on the, on the back page where it says regular salary, official salary.
Perfect, who do you think that is?
Who would that be, for forty-three thousand?
Would then, that's uh, Megan.
Megan, are they Megan's? Yeah.
Which that guy came up with a four point seven. Which that guy came up with a four point seven.
And the, those ones that are all grouped together, that's all her deputies, you know, and.
She said that's Amy.
Amy, Michelle.
And Mary.
And Mary.
And Mary, okay. Mary, Amy, yeah, Michelle, yeah.
Hey, did you find that house file number?
Nope, I actually sent him a text too, and he didn't send me anything back. You know, he was proposing, so maybe he doesn't have a file number yet. But why would we be speaking out against something that don't exist yet?
Right. I wanted to fact check.
You have it.
I wanted to fact check with Jeanie if that's.
On what subjects are you talking about?
On the time I talked a little bit, uh, I said maybe there's some cities proposing like a universal basic income type deal for the lowest, what's that?
Socialism, that's what Steve drove on steroid.
Okay, on my little spreadsheet.
Sorry, alright.
So, um, all of them are four point five percent increases, except for Amy would be seven percent. Which would. And it's a two percent increase from eighty-three to eighty-five.
Which would bring up those three to a five point six total percent increase.
Well, if you're doing the whole line, that's, yeah, cause it's four point five. Theirs are actually four point five.
We're just doing the line.
Right, right. That's how I came up with it.
I guess that's, that's what I was saying, it's probably skewed, cause you're moving Amy up to eighty-five percent.
Right, individually, they are not five point six.
No.
Right, so, in, in you, why, why do you list like, group those ones together, then on the next page you have one separately? Is that just because they're different?
Cause that one is paid for out of general supplemental. Actually, I probably could have more salary in general supplemental because of voting. Because of the election expenses.
That's where Megan's comes out of then.
Uh-huh.
And then Mary's the nurse.
So I got, I got her at four point eight percent increase up though.
And four point five, cause it stayed the same, and her percentage is, um, sixty-two percent, Megan.
Are you planning any deputy increases throughout the year?
No, I, I don't think I've ever done that.
Don't think so either.
I don't think I've ever done it.
What's your plan?
Something drastic would have to change for me to want to do that. Maybe a position, someone retired or, you know, left the office or whatever, for a change like that to happen, but then I feel like there would be wage somewhere else to supplement it. And we have talked about, a few of us have talked, um, when we do have a movement as far as retirement or someone leaving the office, that we possibly wouldn't fill that position. Kinda depends on where we're at in training, across the board in the office, across training that's going on currently. So we've actually thought about that. It might still require, say, a part-time, or during elections, we bring in temporary help, like our PEOs, the ones that are our best PEOs to come in and work the office and help us get through the mail, and especially like for a primary and a general election, which are so heavy.
Yep.
Especially with the absentee voting, you know, line, so.
How much do you pay your part-time people?
I don't have part-time people.
Oh, so this, these PEOs aren't considered part-time?
Chuck, you're not part-time?
They, um, yeah, I don't know that. He's not in my budget.
If you had somebody come in temporarily, you call that a PEO for him?
Part-time.
My precinct election officials, during election season, they are hourly, and no benefits, they're just hourly. I can't recall what the rate is, to be honest. No, it's not.
It's probably in the teens.
Twelve, fourteen.
It's probably in the teens, yeah.
These, I don't know, you said, or is that set by the state?
No, we set it here.
In the courthouse? Well, whose budget is Chuck in?
Um, he is in.
He's not in Paul's anymore.
Cruel, cruel, there you go. A cruel in landfill.
There you go.
Cruel in landfill.
We have about, just about five thousand, a little over five thousand budgeted in accrual for Chuck and his, and FICA and IFRS and stuff like that. He's not on our insurance, he's probably Medicare, I imagine.
Feel like going forward, we're starting to get caught up with wages, I mean, you do a seven, eight percent this year for Amy, four and a half-ish for everybody else, are we gonna?
Oh, Amy, that's cap for Amy, eighty-five percent. That's as high as she can go.
That's true.
And the other two, I mean, presumably, you know, with life currently, um, I mean, Michelle helps a lot with budgets, so some of that fund, some of that actuarial will, it's been, there's a resolution that exists that gives it to me, but I probably won't take it. I probably would dish it out in my office to, because of the work they do for budgets.
When you say, thanks.
Accrual, in that accrual department?
No, I'm just thinking right now, got my head.
Were you around for that resolution?
Yes, we were.
Or you?
Yep, I was. But.
Which is like.
What we have laying in front of us today, not knowing where tomorrow's gonna be with our help in accrual.
Yep.
Well, I mean, we have a chance that we're probably gonna be missing a person a year from now in that position. Do we need to plan our budget accordingly?
Tyler, somebody, you mean?
Or is that something?
It's not a full-time position.
Or is that something, well, I know, but.
Right. I feel like it could be absorbed in my office.
That's what I was.
That's what.
That's what I feel like.
Extra pay.
Yeah.
Go and take those minutes.
Cause he serves a very important, I mean, we can all count on Chuck at this time of the year, you know?
Absolutely.
Yeah, right, just, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to, exactly, I didn't even thought of that, just know that, that there, more likely will be a change in that, before next budget year.
Yeah.
A fair, a good chance it will.
We have to think ahead.
Right.
That's our job.
And there's training, I mean, Tyler, our software company, offers training, um, as far as being able to implement different extra procedures within our software that benefit us in the budget, and, um, so.
Cause there's that.
Yeah.
The other part of it is, they're pulling double duty now.
Right.
And I, I can almost see a need for some of that moving forward as well, having a, to where we can work together in between solid waste in your office too.
And they've been, I think Michelle's been doing, um, his, the landfill claims for a while.
Yeah.
Um, she does other things. I know Trish is doing some of that billing stuff.
Yeah.
They, you know, some of that, because, you know, they have access to wifi now, so it's, the computers are more beneficial to them now than they ever were. Um, so, yeah, we're willing to participate in, I mean, we, of course, we do their, you know, we do payroll, and I'm sure Amy's gonna get them on as long as the landfill commission is okay getting them on the ESS stuff. You know what I mean, that kinda thing?
Yep.
Um, I mean, even if they're not, but it would be nice if they were.
It would be nice.
Because it's nice to be countywide in one process, you know?
Get all that money for it.
So, yeah.
Streamlines everything.
Yeah.
Gives you your block, your box of checks to balances taken care of too.
Yeah, I wish I'd have moved Amy up eighty-five last year, but I, I don't usually jump more than a couple percent at a time. I, I'm like a one or two percenter, it's like, it's a gradual climb, you're learning a position, you learn things every year. I feel like that's how it has to happen. You don't put someone enough. I mean, I, I was elected into a position that was, here it is, happy birthday, you know?
I think you do.
Go forward and do good things. Anyway, but there was a lot to learn, there's a lot to learn. Um, I feel like people that are hired to positions, it's different. I think you have to, you know, there's a learning curve, but we learn, you step them up as they do learn.
So, and is that Iowa code then, that the HR falls under the auditor?
No.
No.
It just has.
An HR department.
Right, some counties have a department.
So we could have just an HR department.
We could.
Be a department head, a non-elected department.
She would be a sole department.
Sole department.
She'd be on the lease when she kind of.
Probably.
She'd be more of a.
And then I'd have to hire somebody else, because I need somebody for elections.
Yeah. Like she covers that.
She covers that, right, I.
I just didn't know.
She's in my election, they're all election.
If we do that, then we need to get her aboard.
Election, when elections come around.
Well, I'm not advocating for that.
We'd have.
Right, that's.
I was just asking the question, I just tried to find out.
You're right, it would be handled very similar to Jane, or even Paul, I mean, they'd be under our total scrutiny after we had an HR department. And we'd have another meeting.
I think that usually falls in your larger.
I have another task to resume.
You get me, Paul, you need a HR department.
Right, cause I have a lot of people to deal with.
A lot of, a lot of those counties help with that.
Have their own.
She does.
Elections, yeah, elections is huge.
County administrators.
Training is good.
She's a huge part of elections, cause her and Bethany were, you know, they tag teamed elections, they did, cause initially I did all that stuff. I would program the, the laptops, I would do the, I did everything, Bethany, um, Lincoln Moker. Megan took her chair.
I, I.
She's in the job right now.
She's no longer here.
Anyway, so now the three of them, the three of them do quite a bit of, as far as setting up and programming, setting up our elections in our laptops and in the scanners, and, and they do all the training, they do, yeah, they're, the three of them are a huge part of elections.
Well, I feel like they like their jobs.
Yeah.
And they have taken initiative to learn more.
They do.
So, I appreciate all that.
And we might not be certified or get fancy whatever, have to test out or whatever, but there is election training and other training every year, multiple times a year. ISAC provides it, Tyler provides it, um, the Secretary of State's office provides it. So, I know, I know a lot of words fall on the fact that certain departments have to take these tests and stuff. Great, that's awesome, but don't think that the rest of us don't need to stay educated and stay up on top of all that training, all the law changes. I mean, Christ, there is legislation out there right now that can put me in jail if I am found negligent in operating an election. I don't know a holy darn county auditor in the state that would ever do that. Yeah, that's gone so, oh my gosh.
It's the.
Sorry, it infuriates me a little bit.
Once again, they're targeting, uh, one or two bad apples.
Right, right, exactly. And, and frankly, I feel, it feels like they're trying to fix something that's not broken in our state.
Right, it's bad apples that aren't even in our state.
They do this in that state, and they do this in that state, and it's like, oh, what about us? What are we doing? We're doing a lot of right things.
Which goes back to Don Camps.
A lot of right things.
Why are we seeing these out-of-state agendas coming to Iowa?
So, sorry, I digress.
Anyway.
That was just fine, um, that was your moment.
If it's any consolation, when we said at our little supervisor meeting, we argued on the same side you're arguing on right now.
Yeah.
So, and that gets us in trouble.
The auditor's budget to me was pretty solid. I mean, the numbers, tit for tat, I mean, I did, I was, I came up with four point six on that one, but you said it's four point five.
Yeah, so they do, that percentage follows mine, but the dollar doesn't. So like for Mary, um, her increase is twenty-five fifty, where mine is three thousand.
Right.
Right.
That kinda thing. Michelle's is twenty-two fifty, and she's at seventy-five percent.
Honestly, the best thing we could do is at eighty-five, so you don't, Steve Almer said that years ago.
I know.
If they were at eighty, all at eighty-five, there would be no nagging between, I'm gonna bump mine up five percent to give them a ten percent raise.
We've heard of that.
And it's happening this year.
And we're here, and I think in the next, we're gonna see some of that. Everybody's up to eighty-five.
But as long as we talk about it, there's a lot of counties that wonder why we have so many deputies. I mean, there's, Shelby County has none, and there are some departments that have one deputy.
Well, I think I was here, being the whole, I was here when that all transpired, cause there used to be a second floor.
There should be a union, courthouse union.
And then, I think that's the office that started it.
Probably.
Deputized everybody. That way she could give the raises she wanted to, instead of having her employees have to go through.
And she still didn't, cause she was gonna save the last dime for the county, but.
But she moved them all, she moved, she moved all the deputy status, so she could control her employees' destiny.
That's exactly right.
And there is a fine line, I mean, you have to take care of them and keep them in.
And I think that's why that started, why it's so many deputies, cause.
But yet, right, I mean, we had someone that was two months into office and was giving, giving out these huge raises.
That isn't very explained to me.
Still happens.
Not that long ago.
Women do the county board supervisors approve deputies.
Yeah, they do, actually.
Yeah, we do.
We actually do.
Which we had had that discussion.
Not too long ago, we were talking about turning that up potentially.
On another board we sit on.
She's got two people, but one that would be her deputy, like Mary, and then because HR is kind of a department on its own, Amy would be, them two in my mind would be legit deputies. And if you don't, you know, I mean, we can't speak for future boards, but as long as you guys don't have to worry about people getting screwed.
Right.
You know, and then losing good people, you know, you have people that could be under, that wouldn't be deputies. That office over there, to me, you have two deputies, one that's in charge of driver's license, one in charge of driver's plate, license plates, and then the rest of them.
You have two, and you have one in recorders.
And one in the recorder for basically.
If you wanted to exercise that.
To me, that's what we could say, that's all you're getting. And I will tell you.
Do they currently have more than that?
That would take the burden off of the department if we said, that's why.
Maybe not the newest ones, but I bet they are, I think they are.
And Sarah just has.
We're always ugly guys.
She has two deputies.
The day they start, the day they.
Maybe that's something we have to look at in the future, if it looks like, you know, Terry works hers to be pretty darn fair to us as well as for people, and way it looks to me. I mean, Amy going to eighty-five, I mean, I see this, you do have demand a lot of her.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean.
When HR takes up more and more all the time, you know, there's more to it all the time.
Well, look at the.
And she works with our employees so well, they're not afraid. When I first started, the person that did that stuff, she was not nice to our employees. And Amy is, she's very cordial, she has that space back there, so if she needs to close the door to have a private conversation, she can, that's kinda why we moved her back there. So she could have those conversations if someone needed to talk about, um, you know, FMLA or any, anything, you know, anything, so.
To me, deputy status was meant more for, just when you said, as they grow and take on more responsibilities and earn that increase in percentage of the elected official, they're doing more, not to give the elected official the opportunity to give, raise them, just to get them a bigger raise.
That's right.
Right.
That's what it was.
That's what some of them use it for, though.
That was the answer I got.
That's what I'm seeing in this next, the one right after yours.
Uh-huh.
The first year that I was here, I asked that question, and that was.
Okay.
Yeah, like, given the research I want.
I don't see nothing to change.
I don't see anything to change in.
And I know, few, when Jean started, one of the things we did eliminate were budgeting for special elections every year. So I, we don't budget for special elections. I mean, it was maybe ten or twelve thousand dollars or whatever, but we just don't. Um, if they come up and we need the funds, we allocate through a budget amendment, so. And that's just not budgeting for things over and over every year, and that money going into our fund balances. Sure, some of that's great going into fund balances, but fund balances, I feel like House File seventeen came into effect not only for the thirty thirty, but for fund balances that are building up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we were part of the percentage of had, what the state deemed an excessively high fund.
Well, I think pot calling kettle black with their three billion dollars.
No, I know, I'm not saying it's right at all, but.
Yeah, their same excuse is, actually more inflated than ours. We, we look at our fund balance, we can operate less than half a year.
Yeah.
They look at their three billion dollars, well, we need it for rainy day.
Rainy day fund, they got that.
Right.
See, and, and ours is actually, you know, you look what they did to us this last year with handing down the, the veteran, you know, exemption.
So, we're on a trip.
And that's just not right.
Their rainy day fund increases that burned our fund balance even.
I handed these out when I came in. I think James is right up here.
Well, anyone go to next?
It's, well, no, this, so this gives some salary history on those, on the departments. So we're on.
Some of that history is.
On the rate, on the increases that they've had since. I think I went back to, I can't remember if I went back to eighteen, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, maybe seventeen. So it shows what everybody in that department's gotten for raises. Sorry, I just, I just wanted you to see the history.
We look at the history even though like a Joni's, two point seven five, two, sorry, from bottom up.
You got eleven thousand in one year.
One year, but I'm just saying that there was other times that it was very low.
And then she got a two point seven and a twelve hundred dollar in one year.
Five percent.
Yep.
The, the year that, that was hard to take is when they, uh, just divided it up among themselves.
What did that end up being total then? I gave you a two point seven plus twelve hundred.
Where, what, where are you at?
What are you looking at?
Right, we're on Department Three.
Are you on Joni?
No, I'm on Joni yet. We're talking to two point seven plus twelve hundred. Didn't, I mean, technically, you gave a four point five to Amy and then bumped her up two points and now she's at seven or eight, so.
But this was.
But these are clerk, these are not.
I, I get that, I'm just saying that there's still the same thing, you're gonna hear the same argument from all the other departments of, well, my gals do this and this and this. And they've done more and they've learned more.
You won't be bumping Amy up until January, July.
July first. I don't do, I don't do these mid-year raises like this.
They got their bump July first and then in December you said, well, they still work harder than.
It's apples and oranges in my eyes, because it, I didn't do it the same way. I don't do mid-year raises. We already just talked about that.
Other people do.
You can see it in the recorder's office.
And it still gets, uh.
So when it shows like at four year twenty, there were three different raises for Joni on, on, in year twenty.
And one year it came.
Two and twenty-two.
Yep.
Okay.
It came out of, uh.
And what does that mean when you say salary no long? What's that? No longevity?
No longevity.
Okay.
So just a little.
Our deputies don't earn longevity. Everybody in the assessor's office earns longevity, including the assessor.
Why?
Exactly.
Why?
Why?
How that could start.
I don't, I'm not the conference board.
Did that end in secondary roads when we got rid of, uh, they were, we got longevity. When I was working.
I bet they get longevity.
Okay, I didn't know if that happened.
They do. I think stuff from the union carried forward. Even when they lost those extra things in the union, most of it carried forward.
But if you, if you look at Iowa code.
I think so.
Clerks are traditionally under the supervisor.
Right.
There, there's some things that are not exactly Iowa code.
I know, but Colin will argue that his aren't clerks. You argue that. I don't know what they are.
But who wants to argue all the time?
I don't.
I, this is good information.
It's just simple, I just.
Can we, the people are like.
Do you have to keep on rolling even on the budget? I thought it was just a agenda.
Oh, I mean, we're on the treasure, move to the treasure.
Department Three.
Alright, I'll stick this in the back.
The new numbers on here still, I mean, the only thing I guess I got is the, that's MV, what do you wanna say? Regular salary, MD clerk, that's up six point four percent. The one underneath that, DL clerk. Is nineteen, nineteen point four percent, motor vehicle, the one under that, uh, three point two percent. And the one under that, the MV clerk, thirty-four point five percent.
Right.
And all of that's thirty-five.
So here's the issue I had with this. I know she moved people around, so it wasn't, you couldn't compare.
That's part of the reason I did this.
Right, and I, I did the overall, I added them all together.
Okay.
Okay.
Just because.
So when total salary in the department, total salary.
Just a different way of looking at it.
Okay.
What'd you get?
So that was a three hundred and six thousand seven, three hundred and six thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. Two hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-three the year before, which is an increase of eighteen thousand twenty-six dollars, which is a six point two percent increase. Now the hard part, that don't sound like, you know, it's more in line with what we're looking for with the four and a half.
That's your total budget increase. Total budget increase.
Six point two, oh, okay.
However, the problem I have, the problem I have is just what you said, you start to break them out. Individually, you're looking at pretty massive raises. And it's part of, because she moved people around and what, it isn't accurate to what they were last year to this year. That's what I wanna know.
That seems like a shell game to me.
Right.
What's underneath the shell? I mean, to me, it's a position, or the position, there's five positions there. I don't care what the name is or what they are. Position number five, which is the regular salary motor vehicle clerk, with grades fourteen thousand dollars from last year.
Right.
Fourteen thousand dollar raise. So all that goes, I mean, that is like a fart in church to me.
It's a loud one?
Yeah. And nineteen percent, alright. But how much of that can we can control? Cause she'll, what we can control, how many deputies?
We can, and we just don't use the things that the state gives us to have. We've just always been status quo, every, you know, because it started so many years ago. And I was told, you know, you start taking things away, that's for you to lose morale, people start getting, you know.
Up to mountain eleven percent raised, raising the salary clerk specialist. Apparently she moving her up eighty-five percent, that's what.
That must be Tammy.
I think that's where you find that, comes off the three or the four that you're talking about. On, on the, on, when we got the deputies and they move up their percentage. That's where that, that's, is it's where there was a lot of confusion on Amy's.
The thirty-five percent would be moving her up to eighty percent. So I have sixty-three, sixty-three, seventy-two, eighty, eighty, and eighty-five percent. So are all the employees in the treasures department salaried?
Yep. Well, they're exempt, they're, no, they're, they're not exempt.
They're not salaried?
They are salaried.
Salary non-exempt.
They get comp time, but they only work thirty-seven and a half hours. You have to work forty to get your comp time, but they still, like, Terry, she doesn't get five weeks vacation. She can be gone, she wants, she doesn't have time ready to be gone.
Figure it out when you.
The other gals get paid the same thing.
That's a, that's a long way.
Wrong, because I think I've got it. But she can't, she just has to do it in her mind, you know, she doesn't actually. The big, this all started when I tried to figure out.
Same thing down there.
So why do salaried employees even get comp time?
They don't. They're only salaried, are they?
Like over forty they do.
You don't.
I don't, I'm elected though.
But if you're a deputy and you're paid a salary, any time over forty hours.
Comp at time and a half. Over forty comp, is that a time and a half?
Even though you're a salaried.
Maybe something we need to put on the salary discuss.
So where does that come from? Or where is that stated? Or is that in a contract somewhere where they sign? Or is it in our employee handbook? Is that where it's stated?
Probably is, in there.
Yes, just being in the private sector my whole. And what you were salaried, you never.
Because certainly, so to be exempt and not earn comp time, you'd have to meet certain criteria. Yes. Harm and labor.
You have to supervise somebody.
Yeah, it's a lot of different things. So like Jake is, he's exempt, mostly because of the IT. Salary exempt.
Which her paychecks are, which does not get comp timed.
Does it?
I didn't think so. What she does is she might work thirty-eight hours one week and then work forty-two the next week. She balances it out. That's how I understand it.
Okay.
Thanks, make some that to me. And so she just balances it in her own, she's got eighty hours.
So your employees in the others part of the day acquire time every year?
Usually at election times.
So is that figured in in the numbers that you submit?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect the budget.
Because they just take that time off then.
Right.
They don't get paid.
Right.
But sometimes it, it's a whole week they take that, it would get the way, but the thing that.
But if they retire, they get paid.
For comp time, and we manage comp time in our handbook, um, at, at fiscal year end, June thirtieth. It cannot carry more than forty hours over, even though we have, well, probably just maybe just a couple that are over that. I know Paul manages his very well. I manage mine, my, my staff, they pay attention to that on their timesheet, because it's on their timesheets or on their face stuff.
Where's it coming out of?
Everybody's hours in the, are in forty hours.
Bigger salary increases.
These guys are paid for a hundred and thirty hours a year, that they didn't work.
What's not?
But yet if they go over forty, we're gonna pay them more.
Boy, number one, it's almost a ten thousand dollar a year.
A hundred and thirty should be time that we owe us anyways.
She paid your money.
One of the new girls is probably taking that position, getting paid out of that line item.
So instead of.
My guess.
Instead of giving ten thousand dollars back, say, she started that money up amongst everybody else.
Right, which are, so you can see on this that Lori, or Brenda and Lisa Blanc are the newest employees. They started in fiscal year, or in calendar year twenty-three, one in December and one in June. They're both at thirty-nine, seven fifty-one. Either of them got that position. I mean, that's over, I think that was a dollar raise for them.
But she said she has to do that, because she promised.
I don't know, why would you make promises like that? Is it in writing? And was it on their hire form?
That all, for the ones that could keep that promise for.
Well, yeah, I.
It's a tough one, you guys, it's.
I know.
This is the trouble, because we can get called the car, what he gave them making fourteen thousand dollars a year raise.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we will, absolutely.
So I mean, if I read this right. She's doing it all. Kami Klinker started here in two thousand nineteen at a salary of twenty-seven.
Going on here.
That's, that's how I'm reading it. And that's the unfortunate part. It's hard to grasp, but it's hard to explain, and don't seem right at all. But what can we do to control that by moving people around to positions that he went from this?
I mean, it was just ninety-nine hundred dollars since June to October.
The only way we'd really be able to control that is cut the, cut our deputies.
And we can.
And the, but, and we gotta critique the budget accordingly.
You could take ten or twenty grand on a buddy.
I'm all for that, because.
Changing the deputy numbers?
When I'm pulling up, because it's not fair to the departments that manage the dollars yet. First of this.
I do like your thoughts of, you got two deputy deputies there, two here and one there. I really do.
You can't have one CEO and five executive officers.
Yeah.
Right.
Nobody gonna be able to, nobody's gonna be there to do the dirty work. I mean, that's.
But at work, at this point, we're not, I mean, we haven't discussed or have it on the agenda to take action on deputies within departments. So it's really down to what we feel needs to be an appropriate budget.
When is the time you can address that?
That's the way that. Even if you change. You're not changing their salary.
Right.
It's gonna be the same.
For, but for down the road, the next year, the next year. They don't get to get the same percentage increase based on.
But if we take, if we take the.
Right.
Actually, they're not a deputy.
It eliminates the confusion we're looking at right here.
That's true.
I can find that if I.
I mean, period, that doesn't exist anymore, and then positions.
I'm talking. We limited where I'm going.
But if you, that they're not deputyized, that falls.
I think so, there's something in the Iowa code about that.
They're supervisors employees, aren't they?
Yep.
The wages, I mean, their salaries or their pay is.
Increase.
Is.
Set by us.
It's affected by this department.
Terry's, Terry's office, the prime example would be, Megan would be underneath in our salary discretion.
Right.
Under your office and under your management, but when we set the budget, it'd be us.
I mean, we approved the budget as presented by Terry.
Right.
So we approved the auditor's budget, and then auditor's budget, you have the salaries listed for. What, what you're saying is we have the authority just to change that if we would so choose, if they're not a deputy.
That's, I mean, I find that in the code.
That's kind of a, one of those great old things again.
Find out how it's settled.
I don't know, I don't know, that's.
Well, guys, we're gonna, I got a meeting at noon I gotta get to.
Okay.
So before you leave, quick, do you have an idea on the treasures? Like, do you have a number that, are you finding where it's at or?
No, I mean, you.
Um, the treasures, let me just make sure that I got this right here. I mean, I was just concerned with the salary, it's an overall six point four percent increase in total budget, from total budget twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four point five.
I'm not sure where you're getting that from, where are you getting that from?
Seven point four, that's what I think.
I didn't.
By the old number of five fifty-eight, eight twenty-six, the new number of five ninety-four.
That's why, I don't have the new numbers, sorry.
Yeah, that's how I find too as well.
Got it. So I know where they're at, I don't have that, I don't have my new forms with me.
And that's, that's the sticky spot, the overall budget increase really isn't that much, it's when you dive into the salaries and the moving around of positions.
Let me throw a little plot thickens again.
Let's do it.
So these are, these, what, five, six positions? They're based on thirty-seven and a half hours, right? Not forty.
They're paid for forty. Right?
No matter how somebody says that to me.
I know.
It, it'll never, as long as I live, sink into me that we, you only have to be here thirty-seven and a half hours, but we're paying you for forty. And somehow, I'm supposed to.
Will we be able to tell that once they get the?
If you removed a deputy park?
No, I'm just saying a new timekeeping, because it's not fair to punish somebody that's actually putting in the forty hours versus somebody that's going home a half hour early every day. There's a three thousand dollar difference, if you only work your thirty-seven and a half hours a week for a year versus putting forty hours a weekend. They're getting like three thousand dollar bonus if they only come.
That's right, here's how, Ty and I talked about this.
We understood that.
Here's how you manage that, put it on the agenda next week, courthouse is open till five o'clock.
Yeah.
Departments manage your time, if they don't take appointments after four thirty, there's your half hour to work till five.
I need fifteen minutes. What's that?
Can I call on myself?
Well, you are the queen.
Here's the problem, if the courthouse stays open till five, nobody's gonna get out of here till five fifteen, so everybody's gonna get comp time.
That's.
Do you think I'm wrong, Terry?
Nope, I don't.
No, I don't think you're wrong either, because.
Not my office, they won't, but.
It'll be a tip for that.
So then I guess.
We'll just stay longer then.
What's the, what's the?
Don't report seven.
They'll get, they'll get comp time.
So would you rather?
Keep her open.
Comp time, or go home.
I would just assume that.
Night court.
This is how I would do it. This is how I would do it if I was the supervisor of a department. I would have a staggered, it would be staggered, that one day you start getting ready to get everything, you take care of the last minute customers and you get.
Under the same assumption that that six point four we derive from increased percentages.
When we get something, but not everybody's gonna stay around and not start shuffling off their desk till five o'clock, because you can accumulate.
You know what we should do?
For my department?
Yeah.
So you manage your people.
What if we take this? Sorry.
Yeah, okay, alright, I just.
What if we take like a department like this, where it's six point four, and we come back and we say, uh, you gotta find a place to take, uh.
Ten percent.
Point nine, would it be point nine? No, one point nine percent off.
To get to four point five.
That's what I'm saying, we did hers and we thought hers was alright, her total salary increases was four point whatever.
Let her do the work to figure out where the hell she wants to cut something, because we don't know how to run her office, I mean, we can.
Granted, we're not gonna stop this, and there's no way we can stop this, I don't think. Apparently, the way it is.
Yeah, because basically, all I see in here that's getting a raise is salaries, so we can just come back and say.
Ten percent?
Five percent is thirty-nine thousand of a total budget.
Well, I mean, the, get this six point four down to one point, four point five.
For one person.
You following what I'm saying?
Well, it should be easily, I mean, you look at the line items, you just go through, they're identical from last year to this year for everything. Except for salaries, so, you know, she's at six point four, it certainly shouldn't be. If it's four point five percent, it should be just under that, because the budget is bigger than just salaries and she's keeping everything else the same. So if she raises everybody's salary four point five, total budget increase would just be by four point one, four point two.
And then we keep an eye on what she cuts, and if she comes back for a budget amendment on one of them. And we don't think it's li- reasonable. No.
Well.
We don't have to give them that.
I like that motion, I would need to be followed up in the near future by this board establishing a number.
Probably.
I agree.
Maybe just downstairs.
You coming back?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get this one down.
I just gotta go to City Hall for my meeting.
Oh, okay.
So you're gonna meet us at just?
Ain't even up to school.
You meet us at just one more for lunch, then?
I can.
Alright.
Say we meet you there at?
I'll be there, I'll be there twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen.
Alright.
We better leave that one.
I think we need like, total budget increases of six point four, and it's all in the salaries. Yeah, that's all in the salaries, Terry's department, the budget increase was four point five, somewhere near four point three, whatever that number is.
Bring it down to four and a half?
You bring, you gotta bring your salaries down to like, no more of a percentage higher to, than that. We were, we just came and said, you know, Terry's looks good, can't, we can't argue that.
Yeah.
Until we had, until we accounted for how many deputies.
Yeah.
We can't control anything else, and it unfortunate, you're right, that's a good point.
So if you wanna get down to a four point five percent increase, let's just say five ninety-four, eight four four.
That's how I see it.
Is the total budget times zero point two five.
That's what you're figuring, what, what, Bobby?
It does take, somewhat take the monkey off the department at the backs.
That's a fifteen thousand dollar decrease to everybody roughly.
But here's, here's the problem, that I see is, if you're called, so when these girls.
At five ninety-four.
A different position.
Uh huh, yes.
That job pays. But that person that was there could have been there for ten years, and then that person that started six months ago jumps up to what that person was making. That is where I have a hard time understanding that you've only been here six months, and you are making the same thing that somebody when they left.
That ain't our, our dog in the fight.
I, I hate to say, you're not wrong, but I don't know how we can control this.
You're not wrong.
I know, I've thought long and hard about that.
I don't know how I can control that.
Our office to manage that, our, we manage this.
Yeah.
But.
This is where we come into managing that, is how many dollars, there are gonna be a lot of to spend. How many dollars, the taxpayer dollars, there are gonna be a lot of to spend.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure.
And they need to answer to the taxpayers.
But they don't, we do.
But I like your reasoning, though, it's all salaries, you're over the four and a half that we've given everybody else.
Like, you called me that one day, I said, I'm just trying to, I'm struggling to try to figure out how to make a fair and honest cut. Especially on the second floor, cause it's all basically salaries. I peeled Terry's election stuff out, cause that varies from year to year, to get, to try to get a fair adjustment.
This one here, you can see where she didn't go up anywhere but salaries, so that's why, to me, this one's a little simpler than like Terry's.
Yeah.
You know, cause even like Paul's, okay, to say, you only get a four and a half percent entry, I mean, I don't know what he's paying more for, for steel, for culverts, you know, you see what I mean? Or tubes and, you know.
Right.
You know, and, and inflation affects that, I mean, but we can come back and do an amendment, like we had to for fuel and stuff for him. You see what I'm saying? And that comes out of our reserves, so that should make the state happy.
But this will be very black and white.
This is black and white.
Down the road, if she comes back with a budget amendment, okay, why are you short?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I gave a.
We approved everything in your budget with a four and a half percent increase in total.
I guess I could see how it really works.
And you're gonna see where the adjustment was made.
Well, how else do you wanna give her a full budget?
No.
I don't need that.
What, I ever said that would make you think that?
I, I truly admire your, yeah, I just don't see how we can control, other than, we're gonna take you down, you gotta drop two points off your salaries, two percent.
Which we just do automatically by reducing the overall budget by fifteen thousand.
And you gotta remember, this, this isn't money that's already being paid to these people. This is July one money, so it isn't like we're affecting labor law, or we're cutting somebody's salary without.
Well, no, that's, but where in these numbers did you see anybody's salary getting cut?
No, that's what I'm saying, that was one of the things we discussed, is you can't go back and lower somebody's salary, you know, like we were talking about down with the assessors group, but you can.
Hold on.
You're, you're.
I like when the light.
Ladies are coming to thank you.
You're what?
You said something, triggered something to me, these salaries wouldn't be in effect till July.
July first.
We come in next week, regulate how many deputies we have. And we say she only gets two, we got three positions to negotiate salaries, come July first. Am I wrong?
Stops the insanity.
I think we need more clarification on.
I do too, but it's just, I'm just, uh.
Cause.
Instead of going to one, I'll fight that for you, how's that? I'll fight for you, gosh, I wish I could borrow my big break case.
They become our employees, I'm waiting to say, you only get two deputies, yeah.
Terry knows where it is, but she's not making the work for it.
Well, that's that evil smirk, too, you might be right.
I probably haven't saved on my computer somewhere if I go look.
You do, I'm surprised I don't have it memorized.
I'm gonna call Christie Harper here real.
Okay, there we go.
Well, this is, that's my suggestion, moving forward.
I would call deputies, I would deputies.
If she was here, if he was here, he'd just call the governor.
Computer, I'd find it for you.
I know.
I'd really, rather talk to his daughter, she probably knows more than Governor.
Probably.
Most times staffers do.
So that's my, they're, they're.
Hi, you have reached Christie Harper, I will tell you that I would say that this is. You go reach me between Friday, January twenty-sixth, and Monday, January twenty-ninth, and that's the office notification. Leave a message, and I'll turn your call when I am on the thirty, and have a great day.
Hey, Christie, Dave Mulbar here, get a chance, you wanna give me a call back sometime, just got a couple questions for you, thanks, Christie.
I only leave your number, which you feel about you.
Oh, he's the handsome guy on the board.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, as of now.
You need to do, the recorders are gonna be the same.
As of now, knock fifteen off.
I will call three three one point nine oh four.
Fifteen grand dollars.
Yep. That brings it back down to four and a half, we'll increase, we'll hold some salaries, she might still give somebody a ten and somebody else a one.
Yeah.
But that's not mine.
So what are you saying for the treasurer, then reduce fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Twenty.
Two, two percent, yeah.
Well, two and a half is.
Well, you can always go down, but you can't go back up, so we'd say fifteen.
Ups, easy.
I gotta have.
I'm, I'm in fifteen.
What I'm doing is trying to give us something, that somebody comes in here, wants to throw fists, or say, hey.
That's Dave's idea.
You know?
You ever slap me like that?
Just accordingly.
We talked about this all year, this is how we wanted to do.
All, yep, four and a half, you're gonna start reading that.
Let's just do it. We're gonna take a bloody nose, Cecil's gonna like us, and that's it. And I spring that up for Jean, she's the one that'll get the call.
She cares, that's all. Don't, don't.
I don't know how else to do it.
Well, I get you, I know you brought it down to four and a half, it's in salaries, I know you care.
Yeah, cause I mean, if, if it was in other places on hers, I mean, we, we looked through her, she didn't raise anything else.
Everything, there's, everything's the same.
Yeah, you could go the other way, too, and take last year's budget, five, five, eight, eight, two, six.
I guess, oh, that's right, that's.
That's what I was doing. Zero point four five, that's twenty-five thousand one hundred forty-seven and seventeen cents increase.
Yep, that's what I have right here.
You guys got it right?
I was just working it backward.
No, I know, it's okay.
How much was the increase?
I don't have those new numbers, so I had to do it that way.
Okay, that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm.
It's twenty-five thousand one hundred forty-seven, do that, that's where, that's.
Still a twenty-five thousand dollar increase?
Yep. Yep, at four point five percent.
There you go.
It's pretty easy to do, though, cause we can.
We do that?
We can say this.
Instead of saying we're cutting fifteen, you're allowed a twenty-five thousand dollar.
One hundred and forty-six, yeah.
And seventeen cent increase.
That's where I'm at.
And that's where, we're gonna.
Recorder and attorney, we can all do the same kinda damn thing.
You know, and quite frankly.
He has.
Sorry. What happens that dollar, where's that guy?
It's probably in the drawer somewhere.
Uh, you know, I don't notice cussing, so you'll never get a call out by any of us, throw. I'm a trucker. The, uh.
Mom mic, I forgot.
Oh.
Send your mom.
Sorry, Patty. And even if we do come back and say, we're, you're, you only get two deputies, I mean, where the pay is at that point for that person, I guess that's what. I mean, until July first is only, you can still trim until July first.
I like where we're at, with the four and a half.
I do too. But then in the future.
Yes, I still think we need to address the deputies.
We have to address that, I mean, it's, it's, it's a complete pain in the keister.
I still think we could address courthouse hours.
Yeah, hope that. You know, and it, and it takes some management, the auditor's office having trouble, not in my opinion, do they have more things they have to file at the end of the day? That was one of the things I remember.
That's what it was.
They have more things they gotta do with the state, but again, manage that, tell that person, all right, you had to stay an extra half hour, come in a half hour later.
Be a manager, my friend. Be a manager, and don't, you gotta manage your people.
Yeah, that's what I started with.
Yeah.
You know, there's so much gotta be done on the day, and we're gonna get done forty hours.
If we're at a stopping point. Something, we got, the taxpayers are paying you to do.
I always refer back to the bank, you know, it's really managed there overtime, it could speed overtime, you know.
All managers is overtime, as best as he can, I mean.
Elections are literally the only time we get overtime.
The bank closed at four.
Unless Amy has to go to a conference board meeting, but I bet, I'm gonna bet, she didn't document those hours on her time sheet. So to say she always only works thirty-seven and a half, not true, cause she often does that shit. And, sorry, Patty, she often does that, and, I'm just saying.
I guess.
You know what I mean, she does it, and I've told them over and over again, document your time, document your time, document your time.
I guess at that point, your point on top of her point, I'd rather see this place open till five o'clock, and if Amy goes to there, or. Anybody goes and does something and gets a little comp time, I'm fine with that.
But she's sitting honest, you know the comp time was there.
It's more honest than it would be.
But tomorrow I might cut out early, cause I went to the conference board.
But you, but you use that comp time you bank. You use that comp time you bank to get them.
If Amy.
What it's for.
If Amy wouldn't have been here this morning till nine fifteen or whatever, then that's acceptable, because she.
It's not there to build up for retirement, it's to you.